I now open the Ordinary Council meeting on the twenty second of August twenty twenty three at seven oh seven P M. At councillors, I will now ask councillor D'Souza to read the acknowledgement.
I would like to acknowledge that we're meeting on the land of the Bidgegal and Gadigal peoples, who occupied the Sydney coast. Being the traditional owners on behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge in paying my respects to the elders, past and present, and to Aboriginal people in attendance today.
Councillor Hamilton to read the prayer.
Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Randwick and Australia. Amen.
Amen. Thank you councillors, you can please be seated. Thank you. Do we have any apologies? I've received, yeah, there's an apology from councillor Luxford, who is currently overseas. Are there any other apologies? No, we're all here, there being no one who is joining via Teams or audio visual link. Um, can I please have somebody move the apologies? Moved councillor Rosenfeld, seconded councillor Burst, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you very much. Okay, uh, can I please have somebody move the confirmation of the minutes? Uh, move the confirmation of the minutes on the twenty fifth of July, moved councillor Rosenfeld, seconded councillor D'Souza, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Councillors, do we have any declarations of pecuniary and non pecuniary interests? Um, I will go around the horseshoe, um, however, what I'll say to all councillors is if at any time during the debate, uh, it comes to mind that you have a declaration to make, please call out and I will take that declaration at that time. Are there any declarations? Uh, councillor Pendlefeeny.
Um, so regarding not, uh, notice of motion fifty nine twenty three, I have a non significant non pecuniary interest for the motion. Um, my cousin-in-law, which is my partner's cousin, is a lecturer at UNSW in the School of Art, Design and Architecture. Um, but she has no, um, she's not the dean and she doesn't make, uh, decisions on any, uh, things that I have put up in the notice of motion, so I will be voting on the motion, thanks.
Thank you councillor Nielsen.
Um, it's in relation to the Ramick Junction planning proposal, CP thirty twenty three.
Uh, councillor Nielsen, could you please turn on your microphone?
Thanks very much everybody. So it's in relation to CP thirty twenty three Ramick Junction planning proposal. Um, it's a non, uh, non significant, non pecuniary interest. As directors of the Board of the Ramick Club are known to me through any of my involvement in the Australian Labor Party, I'm currently a member of the club. I do not participate in the management administration or any other activities around the club to any extent which would give rise to the perception of particularly strong affiliation. I have not received a reportable or non reportable donation within the last four years.
Thank you, uh, councillor Vich. Now, are there any further declarations councillor Rosenfeld?
Okay, just regarding CP twenty nine slash twenty three, I'm acquainted with the applicant for fourteen Broome Street, Maroobra and communicated with council officers only regarding the time taken to reply to the applicant concerning the amendment DA. I also visited the work site at the invitation of the applicant. I, uh, the applicant also volunteered for the Liberal Party Maroobra campaign, uh, twenty twenty three. Therefore, I declare a non pecuniary and non significant declaration and will still debate and vote on the matter.
Thank you. Councillor, councillor Wilson. Councillor Wilson, do you have any declarations? Councillor Said, would you like to give your declaration? I can come back to you councillor Wilson. Councillor Said.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, CP thirty slash twenty three, non to given, non pecuniary interest. The directors of the Board of the Ramick Club are known to me, I am currently a member of the club. I do not participate in the management, administration or any other activities of the Ramick Club to any extent which would give rise to perception of particularly strong affiliation. I have not received a reportable or non reportable donation in the last four years. I will be participating in the matter and also CP thirty slash twenty three, a non pecuniary, non significant. Dr Brian and Kay Javi are known to me, they were, um, my father and I were once patients, so I will be voting on the matter.
Thank you, uh, councillor Burst.
Uh, CP twenty nine slash twenty three, um, fourteen Broome Street, um, the owner is known to me and, um, was a volunteer in my state campaign in March. And it's non significant, or I consider it to be, um, non significant and non pecuniary, thank you.
Thank you, uh, councillor D'Souza.
Smear wasn't going to declare anything, but since councillor Said mentioned the famous Brian Javi and his lovely wife Kay. They two are friends and they do a lot of community work besides a good physician. I do know them and I will be voting on the matter and of course Charmaine Lambros is here, she's related to John Lambros, the cardiologist who I also know. So I, I again, non significant, non peculiar interest, I'll be voting on the matter, but as I said, normally I shouldn't even have to declare it, but I have just to keep be transparent on the matter, thank you.
Thank you, uh, councillor Nielsen.
Uh, Dr Javi is also known to me. On the matter.
Thank you, uh, councillor Wilson.
Uh, yes, um. I would like to, um, uh, I have a conflict of interest regarding the, uh, Randwick Club. I am a member of the Randwick Club, um, I don't have any, anything to do with its administration. Uh, I've not received any donations, uh, to my, any campaign, um, at any time. And I, I will be wa- um, voting on the matter.
Okay, thank you. Can I just clarify that it is a non significant, non pecuniary interest that you're declaring?
Sorry, non significant, non pecuniary.
Thank, thank you very much councillor D'Souza.
Non significant, non peculiar interest will be waiting on the matter Nigel Singh over there. I know him through the Petersham, Randwick Petersham Cricket Club, Mike Whitney's club. So, but I know him, but it won't affect my decision making, no. Just non significant, non peculiar interest, I'll vote on the matter, thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a declaration relating to CP thirty slash twenty three, a non significant, non pecuniary interest. Uh, the directors of the Board of the Ramick Club are known to me through their separate individual involvement in the Australian Labor Party. To the best of my knowledge, uh, I do not currently believe, uh, sorry, I do not believe that I'm currently a member of the club. I may have been in the past, I do not participate in the management, administration or any other activities of the Ramick Club to any extent which would give rise to a perception of a particularly strong affiliation. I have not received a reportable or non reportable donation in the last four years. I will be participating in the matter. Okay, uh, thank you very much councillors, a reminder that if any further declarations come to you through that, throughout the meeting, um, I will take them. Uh, we now move, uh, to the public component of, uh, the meeting where I will read out, uh, the chairperson's announcement. Uh, in respect of the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, uh, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of tonight's meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause five twenty to five twenty three of Ramick Council's Code of Meeting Practice. Audio visual, uh, recordings, uh, are expressly prohibited, uh, by council. A person may be expelled from the meeting for using or having used an audio video recorder without the authority of council. Now, uh, for the announcement of speakers, all members of the public, uh, who are addressing tonight's meeting will have a maximum of four minutes in which to put forward their case. Uh, there are no extensions available, presenters will be stopped at the four minute mark, uh, once it has expired. Councillors can ask members of the public questions, uh, to clarify their presentations. Uh, however, uh, presenters are under no obligation to answer the questions and can refuse to do so if they wish. Uh, our first speaker for the evening, uh, is on CP twenty five slash twenty three, uh, V P A voluntary planning agreement letter of offer, DA slash four eight one slash twenty twenty one sixteen to eighteen Rainbow Street, Kingsford, speaking for Mr Jason Lee. Is Mr Jason Lee present this evening? No, what I will do is I will come back to this matter if he does, um, attend, otherwise we will move to, we will move to CP thirty slash twenty three Randwick Junction Planning Proposal, speaking against. Uh, the proposal is Mr James Phillips, who was the first speaker representing sixty High Street Randwick.
Mayor and councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm James Phillips, I'm a heritage consultant and I speak on behalf of the owners, um, uh, Dr and Mrs Javi, um, of, uh, sixty High Street Randwick. I speak on a matter that's almost housekeeping for council in that the premises owned by the Javis is, um, a house that, um, is potentially to be included as a contributory item in the conservation area. And I'd like to draw councillor's attention to a couple of facts pertaining to this. The first is that the house is in splendid isolation on High Street, directly opposite the tram terminal and with considerable large modern buildings built around it and, uh, adjacent to it, uh, quite large residential flat buildings. As an individual dwelling, it's quite isolated. Secondly, um, some years ago, the Javis, um, demolished a part of the house uh, with council permission of course, in order to provide off-street parking for their patients and, and for the staff working for them. Um, this has had quite a profound impact on the building which was originally symmetrical and, uh, I know this is at a distance and on old fashioned paper, but, uh, you can see that the house, uh, is completely surrounded by other buildings and is, is in this splendid isolation. The third factor is that in, um, the definitions of the, um, heritage conservation area that is, uh, subject to this, um, uh, planning proposal. Um, the, uh, statement of significance talks about, um, the Belmore, uh, Road Shops and the group of shops around, um, Avoca and, uh, Street and, and Allison Road as being the two primary areas of the conservation area. Um, the buildings on High Street are really at the very back end of this conservation area and it's the edge of the conservation area which probably runs down the middle of the tram tracks, uh, to the next corner. So there doesn't seem to be any great sense in terms of the contribution of this building to the conservation area, nor its relationship to the principal areas of the conservation area. So it would seem very sensible to remove it, um, as a potential, um, uh, 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 contributory item to the conservation area. It's also noted in this planning proposal that heights and densities are to increase in this area just as they should right next to a tram terminal. And I've, um, had considerable experience in other local government areas where, um, individual buildings have been left as contributory items or heritage items in areas undergoing considerable redevelopment. Where the buil- the, the building itself, which is represented in many other, um, examples in, in this local government area, ends up being, um, in a situation where it has no relationship with anything and it stops reasonable and orderly development of the rest of the land around it. So this, this area, the next door neighbour has a potential, or this, this land has a potential for eight storey height. And, um, it's going to sit there, not be developed because of, it can't be demolished as a contributory item in a conservation area. And that street and its potential to get density in the local government area is going to be somewhat stymied. Um, the rea- and it's going to be stymied while the real, uh, heritage significance of the conservation area lies on Belmore Road and Avoca and, uh, Allison. So, um, in summary, a good bit of housekeeping to not make this a contributory item and let development happen along the street where it's already happened.
Thank you.
I'm fine, I think you've heard it all.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? There being no questions of the speaker, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We now move to the second, uh, speaker on CP thirty slash twenty three. Uh, speaking against, uh, Ms Charmaine Lambros, uh, on behalf of one sixty four Belmore Road Randwick.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to come speak to you tonight on behalf of myself, the owner of one hundred and sixty four Belmore Road Randwick and my neighbours, the chemist Weyhouse on one side and Ortho Sports on the other side. Uh, we have been working closely with council town planners throughout this process. Uh, and we are for the change in Randwick although having done some economic studies ourselves, we would say that we're not quite there yet. Unfortunately, based on the economic appraisal conducted on our behalf by Atlas Economics, it seems that the proposed controls for our three sites will not be commercially feasible, making it impossible to trigger the change that Randwick so desperately needs. When our economists looked at the council's proposed combination of height, commercial versus residential ratios and affordable housing percentage compared with the current commercial reality in terms of rental returns on this fully medically tenanted corner of Randwick, in conjunction also with the current climate in the construct, in the construction industry. It became very clear that it would be impossible to develop this site with this current combination of proposed conditions. With the landowners feel that it would be a shame to have made so much progress only to end up with a plan that cannot be implemented in reality. And we would be happy to share the results of our economic study with the councillors and their economists. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? There being no questions, thank you very much. Thank you. We now move to C C eighteen twenty three, Alfresco Randwick Programme, speaking, uh, for Mr Simon.
Good evening everyone, uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about, uh, Alfresco. Um, my name's Reed Simon, I'm the owner of Dolce Fiori in Randwick, uh, the Italian, the most amazing Italian restaurant in the eastern suburb. I am so, so passionate about. I'm really, really passionate about the Alfresco dining, coming from, from Europe and grew up in Italy and have a seventeen years, uh, experience in hospitality. I think this is gonna change the whole scenery in the spot. The spot is one of the oldest and the most, I think the nicest place in the whole eastern suburbs, not because of the restaurant there. You've got the Ritz, you have a history, the whole spot have a history. Um, lot of people around have families, lot of people around walking with puppies and everything, they have nowhere to go. We started actually inviting and do a couple of tables only outside just to invite people to come and have a date with their own puppies, providing the Alfresco and have more extra space. It's gonna bring people and families together and that's just what the whole restaurant is all about. Especially after Covid, everybody now working from home. This is an opportunity for everyone to go and spend a bit of extra time out there where they can see their loved one. You can spend more time meeting people, talk with everyone, that's just the whole, uh, uh, nightlife, the experience it's all about. We've been trying every, for every second to enhance the experience in Randwick. If it's us me as a restaurant, if it's a narrative, other restaurant and everything. Only things we need now, the approval from you guys just to come and say, there you go, we're ready to go, let's just give it a crack. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the speaker? There being no questions, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we now move to N M fifty eight slash twenty three, notice of motion from councillor Pendlefeeny. Uh, Local Government, New South Wales, twenty twenty three, annual conference motion discouraging gas and solid fuel heating in new developments to mitigate global warming. Speaking for Dr Anthony Hull.
Good evening everybody and thanks very much for having me come and speak tonight. Um, I'm very happy to be here, uh, to support councillor Pendlefeeny's motion. Um, I'm here with several hats on. I'm here as a doctor because I understand the severe impacts climate change is having on the health of our society and our families. Indeed, it's the worst public health emergency for this century and it will continue to be so. I'm also here as an anaesthetist. I understand inherently just how bad and otherwise invisible gas can be, or gases, on the physiology or the health of a person. I'm here as a member of Doctors for the Environment Australia as well and Doctor for the Environment, New South Wales. And as a net zero lead, a net zero clinical lead for the Ministry of Health. Part of my job ha- is to improve the chances of our healthcare sector to reduce their emissions towards net zero. As part of that job, I have been advocating for a ban on new gas connections to new healthcare infrastructure. That is gaining some momentum for obvious reasons. I'm also here as a parent because I understand that our children are going to bear by far the worst and the most longitudinal burden of the effects of climate change. They've had no role in the problem, it's not their fault. I'll speak a bit more specifically to the issue of gas than I will to the issue of solid fuels. Solid fuels are a very large problem. My wife is a cardiologist, she talks to me about it all the time. They're responsible for the deaths of one million people in twenty nineteen because of their use in homes across the world. There are many precedents with regards to action being taken on gas at council levels. This is not for no reason and the example as many people here will know, but the most recent one being the city of Sydney. With regards to the health effects of gas being used in the home. When you combust gas, it releases several pollutants, P M two point five, which is a very microfine air pollutant. It gets into your lungs and then into your bloodstream, it has access to every organ in the body. It can cause a whole swathe of inflammatory responses and diseases and does. Carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides and benzene are other pollutants, also formaldehyde. These are all pollutants that are achieved in significant levels in homes where gas is used for heating and cooking. Thirty percent of asthma cases are caused by the effect of gas being used in the home and thirty percent of incidences of asthma attacks. I should say that in twenty fifteen, the calculated costs of asthma across the country were put at twenty eight billion dollars. Cardiovascular disease has worsened and can be induced by the effects of pollutants in the home using gas and also cancers, in particular paediatric lymphomas and leucemias. A prominent oncologist from the United States has recently said that there is no doubt that using gas in homes has caused the deaths and will continue to cause the deaths of people if we continue to use gas in our households. With regard to the outside pollutant effects or the ambient effects of these gas pollutants, because they all eventually make their way into the outside air. The costs in, in California have been calculated by the U C L A because of the healthcare effects of these at three point five billion dollars per year. The New England Journal of Medicine in twenty twenty, in an editorial, stated that we should be banning all gas connections to commercial and residential locations. With regards to climate change, of course, burning gas creates C O two and this is by far the biggest cause of climate change around the world. Unfortunately methane is ninety times more potent than carbon dioxide and that's natural gas. Fugitive emissions of methane from reticulated gas throughout our society cannot be ignored and they are significant. They even occur from the stove top, seventy five percent of those that do occur, occur between uses of the average stove top in a home. This along with levels of benzene that are released from a stove. The levels of methane in our atmosphere are increasing currently exponentially and this is an incredibly troubling development. And it's with good reason. Thank you very much, very much for, um, listening to me.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? Councillor Chappell.
Thank you and thank you for coming along and sharing your expertise today, Dr Hull. Um I was just interested um as the parent of two small children, um in the house. Um is it the case that it's the older connections that are an issue where there's like more leakage? Or do the newer stoves have it, like where where are the kind of risk factors? And you said fugitive emissions between cooking, could you maybe explain that a bit?
Yeah, yeah. So firstly pertaining to the stove tops, the age doesn't really seem to matter. Um it doesn't seem to matter so much either whether you have it adequately vented with a range hood. Um the most recent research from the United States was looking at um stove tops between three to eighteen years old. And there didn't seem to be much of a difference. Um and with regards to the fugitive emissions yet, so stove tops leak methane. As do many parts of the system, for example, your gas meter, which um I've been told is a normal phenomenon. You just leak methane from your gas meter at the front of your house. Um it's a significant amount, probably about one percent of gas, but if you apply that to an entire population using gas, that's a massive amount. Of highly potent greenhouse gas being emitted to no purpose. So the point with the seventy five percent figure is just that you lose about twenty five percent of that methane from your stove top when you're cooking. And the rest of the time is responsible for about seventy five percent of that methane leakage. And that's when you're asleep at night time, et cetera. Um these levels of pollutants from that leakage, for example benzene as well, um they achieve significant levels in bedrooms in homes also.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, thank you very much.
Thanks everybody.
Thank you. There being no further speakers. Oh, my apologies, Mr Singh. Uh so we have speakers uh on uh this particular matter. On NM sixty one twenty three, no sub motion for councillor said preparing for the growth in football for the twenty twenty four season. Speaking in favour, Mr Nigel Singh, representing ESFA.
Thanks man, thank you councillors. Um to introduce myself, I am the Chair of the Eastern Suburbs Football Association. We are the delegated authority um in charge of governing football in the eastern suburbs. Which covers Randwick Council, covers Bayside, Wulara, Waverley, City of Sydney and Centennial Parklands. We have roughly ten thousand participants covered as part of that um across twenty four clubs. What that figure doesn't capture however, is people that play the sport in schools. People that um would put, you know, go down to a park and kick the ball around anecdotally with their friends. Um people who are participants as part of academies and and other areas. So it's a it's a strong base. Um no surprise, I'm speaking for the motion. Um firstly in saying that though, I want to acknowledge um the work and support that council's done for football in the area over the last few years. Um Todd, Ryan, Nick, Asef and Bronson are fantastic to deal with and the support they've given us as a sport and our constituent clubs has been second to none. Also the live sites that that you all hopefully participated in and enjoyed over the Mighty Matilda campaign. And the World Cup was fantastic and again was a massive boost for our sport and I want to congratulate and thank you guys for doing that. And lastly, just the standard of facilities that we see um from council across the across the parks um in in general. Um it is safe to say that Randwick City Grounds across um across all sports, but particularly in football. Are the envy of of many other sports um across and many other council areas. You go out west and you see some of the standard those grounds compared to your grounds, it's it's fantastic. So thank you again. Um in in speaking to the motion though, um I I I do look forward to the opportunity to partnering with Randwick City Council. Further than we have. Um I I understand in the past we haven't been potentially the best corporate citizen. I think that the track record of of my team um over the last three or four years will will prove that. We are a much better corporate citizen and the backing of our clubs will certainly speak to that as well. Um football is a complicated game in terms of the stakeholders and I'm sure. You're getting phone calls from, you know, twenty four different clubs and other participants. What we'd like to do is work with council to navigate that complexity and understand who's who in the zoo, which I know is very, very difficult at times. Um the second thing I'd like to 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 speak to to the motion from councillor said is. Is the ability to have a regional quality facility here in Randwick City Council. Um currently ESFA, when we run programmes for our ten thousand participant coaches, parents. Um the only two regional quality facilities in the area or in Sydney are either in the Hills District or out at Manly. Causing our participants to have to go out to those distances. So talented young kids will have to do their homework in their car going out to Valentine's Sports Park. And then on the way back, getting home at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock after training. So the ability to work with council to find regional quality facilities would be fantastic for us as a sport. The last thing is, is you would have seen today that, you know, that Australia's looking at 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 putting in a bid for. The the twenty thirty four or twenty, yeah, thirty four World Cup. The ability to have regional facilities, the ability to have more infrastructure to support gender neutral toilets. Lighting in the area potentially means that at the next World Cup here in our shores. We'll see a participant from the Eastern Suburbs Football Association, from this LGA potentially at that uh World Cup. Lastly, again, I want to acknowledge again and thank the work that Randwick City Council does. It's, you know, you you are a pleasure to deal with for our constituents. And I'd like to work closer and partner with you guys more in terms of delivering great facilities for all our participants. But also the knock on supports because football is a gateway sport. An investment into football is an investment into all sports. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a question from councillor Chapel.
Sorry, Mr Singh, not quite so quick. Um thank you so much for coming and speaking to the motion today and thank you for the work that EFSA does. Um I'd be really interested to know from your perspective, um what would be the guest best case scenario in terms of providing regional quality fields? Particularly for women in the area, what that would look like? Um and if there's anything in your observation um that would benefit women's participation um in soccer specifically, more generally. And I acknowledge um as a child who played soccer, the driving across Sydney was something I very much do not want to replicate with my own children.
Yeah, um so there there's there's a lot in that. Um so in 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 terms of female specific facilities. Um I think it's 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 no, it's no secret that um access to to gender neutral um facilities is is important. Um and and access to to changing rooms. I'll I'll give you an example. Um Heffron Park, and I know there was a motion that was put before council last year, um roughly about this time. Um Heffron Park at the moment will have potentially five hundred, six hundred female athletes or participants at any given moment. Um there's currently only one change room um available. Um and if I would call a spade a spade, the the change rooms aren't big enough. So what you've got is a lot of participants getting changed on the side of a field. If you're looking to bring new participants into the sport, that's an inhibitor. Um and especially if you've got, and if you look at the changing demographics of of this LGA. If you've got people coming from a a culture where modesty is is important, that's that's an inhibitor. So that that's one of the big things. So the 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 fields are fantastic, but maybe the infrastructure around the fields would help um participants to feel more comfortable. Um lighting is a is a huge um faci- is a huge problem. Um truthfully, I I think you can shuffle the decks around grounds and availability. The the issue becomes on a Tuesday night, on a Wednesday night, on a Thursday night, when people want to train. And so what you get is three, four, five teams on a on a field. Um that may be lux fifty, that may be unsafe. Um and then you've got the issues or especially the issues around getting, if you're training on Heffron forty six, getting to the car park, that's a two hundred metre walk in the dark. Especially when all the lights go off. So lighting is a huge factor as as well. Um and and then the other thing is is just accessibility to grounds. Um we've got some of our largest clubs that are running at capacity because they don't have the ability to grow. So if you look at our, and obviously that means that people go to the smaller clubs. But larger clubs have greater infrastructure, have greater ability to to help the growth of football. Um those clubs cannot grow and therefore we're seeing people leave the sport or potentially not come to the sport.
Thank you. There is a question from councillor D'Souza, then I saw councillor Veach, then I saw councillor Sid.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Singh, I was very impressed with what I saw at Heffron Park. Our staff did a good job and more importantly, I saw the community uh really committed, passionate and enjoying themselves. So I have two questions. The first one is, are you looking for something like we've already built, a wonderful Heffron Centre? Are you looking for something of that scale or along those lines? That's my first part of my question.
Um look, if if council deemed it appropriate to give us a facility like that, we'd take it. Don't get me wrong, we would take, we would take it, but that's.
A very good answer, but so to build something like that, we got funding from the state and the federal government. So you'd have to play your part too. So have you all drafted any letters to our federal and state members? To help build a facility of this kind or something you could consider?
There there's 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 multiple things within that. So the 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 funding that you refer to and there's the Greater, there's the Greater Sydney Grants and then there's multiple funding to be announced, I I believe. As well is, we we need to work in conjunction with council to understand what the scope of what a facility would look like. In in order to 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 go for funding. We're 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 a bo- whilst we do have staff, we're a volunteer, not for profit association. We need to work with council and understand the capacity of council to to then go to those bodies to understand what the funding is. And and for most of the the funding that's available, my understanding is it's it's in spade ready projects, right? So a- again, it's working with council to understand what the appetite is, what the fun, what what the cost would be. And then working in partnership with council to go and and seek those funding methods.
Thank you. Uh I had a question from councillor Veach.
Ah thanks very much for coming in. I have a couple of questions for you, if that's okay. I was wondering if you might be able to um provide uh council, obviously not tonight. But with any gender data that you might uh have in terms of what sort of access to women and girls. Uh have to your sort of better quality on your fields, you know, are they getting equal access? Given that there's probably still, perhaps not, um at some levels uh more boys teams or men's teams. And it might be more difficult for the uh women and girls teams to get access at certain times to to pl- you know, to play matches and for training. Um and then also what are your thoughts on sort of uh A or higher grade um natural turf fields? Because um while council is very supportive uh of of upgrades. Uh for some of us, the synthetic turf fields are a huge bone of contention. And there's actually other, many other people in the community who don't support synthetic turf fields. Um so yeah, they would be my two questions to you. Thank you.
How much time I've got to answer that? Um uh uh can I, if I can answer the the question on synthetic versus grass, uh the the there's a couple of things to take into account. Um there are studies that show for female athletes um a high correlation of injury with synthetic fields. Um that's just a soft tissue and especially around menstrual cycles as well. So there is, there is a a conversation to be had around. Female athletes um playing on on high quality premium fields. Um and and I believe that was a a key tenant of the proposal that was put forward last year. The 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 flip side of that though is premium fields require a lot of investment and a lot of maintenance. Um and therefore whether the whether council's got the appetite to actually maintain those fields again. Within ESFA, n- clubs don't have, or the association don't have ownership of the fields to be able to come in under a licence and maintain those fields. So the the question is, is what is the cost of maintaining those premium quality fields versus the initial outlay of a synthetic field? Um again, from a, from an association perspective. Um we love the opportunity to have synthetic fields because it means when we have a season like last year where it's heavily impacted by rain. We're able to schedule as many games as possible. Um and and the and the overall cost benefit equals out over a a a number of years. Saying that though, for for elite female athletes, again anecdotally, the 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 there is information being. And it's been a, it's a smaller sample size, but over five, six years, especially out of the college system in the US. That shows that there is a high concentration of soft tissue issues. We're talking ankles and ACLs and and hips. Doesn't answer your question, I know. Um but a- again, elite athletes always prefer to play on grass. Um but the ability to maintain those elite premium facilities um is something that needs to be considered. Um in terms of the 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 first question, uh can I take that on notice and revert back to to council around the participation? I've got the participation numbers of of female um athletes versus male athletes. But access to facility, I don't have that information. Again, I'd I'd need to loop back in with the twenty four constituent clubs that sit within the. Within the association and and revert back. But headline numbers, um gender, this is last year. Um we had six thousand five hundred and fifty eight male participants. Um and two thousand and eighty five female participants. Um again, we're doing everything we can to to grow those numbers. And we've obviously got a very obvious tailwind in terms of um interest in the sport. But it's it's it's, having access to fields isn't necessarily a male female thing. It's it's just being able to get on a field um is 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 a problem a lot of the time as well. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Councillor Sid.
And thank you Nigel for coming in. Um just at the moment, the participation numbers for football as a percentage, what would that be at the moment?
Um of of overall council.
Of of overall in Randwick.
Yeah, so Ausplay, um I I don't know if councils are across the Ausplay statistics. It's an independent statistic done by the Australian Government and the Australian Sports Commission. Um that had football at twelve percent of um participants in sporting clubs in the Randwick LGA. Um just to fly my banner whilst I've got the mic. Um the next highest winter code represented is a net ball with three point five percent of participants.
So with the Matilda effect, is there an anticipation of how that will grow with that double? Or it's just sort of, what's what's the anticipation?
Uh it's it's difficult to say. Like a- as I mentioned, uh some of our figures are opaque as a sport. Because s- the schoolchildren in this LGA may go to a private school and I don't see those numbers. But um I was, Mr Clark was anecdotally mentioned to me before um the meeting. His child did not play football. After watching football on on TV for the last four weeks. She wants to play football, right? And I'm sure anecdotally, you've all got that same, got that same effect. Now, I'm not saying that they'll stay in football, but again, football has always generally been a gateway sport. Where people will come to our sport initially and then move into other sports. So I do anticipate um growth in our sport, but I couldn't quantify to you, uh councillor said, what that would be.
And my last question, with with that sort of growth, there's also at the moment, there's an inherent. Um some teams have been sitting on fields for for the past twenty years. Um so there obviously needs to be collaboration with yourselves and Randwick Council with the, with Ryan, et cetera. And uh so it does need to, both parties do need to come together and start to work out with this sort of growth. What fields can be used and what fields can't be used, obviously.
Uh look, um I don't want to take fields away from other sports, that's not my go. I want to get the best fields available for my sport. But um anecdotally, as you walk, as you drive around the LGA, you you do see some fields allocated to other sports that are being utilised. Um it may be appropriate for us to work, again, work with council to understand. Field allocations to best suit the the current demand in certain sports.
And my my last one is, I think every government and every uh every agency is jumping on board as well. Um and there's grants going out here, there and everywhere. Obviously, would it be uh beneficial if yourselves and council officers got together and. Um worked for those grants, especially in lighting, et cetera. And sort of, you obviously got contacts, we've we obviously got our guys. So would be very beneficial to sort of get some big grants here.
Look, a- a- absolutely. Look, we we've, a- again, Eastern Suburbs Football Association has fantastic relationship with Randwick City Council. But um in in many cases, as the field owner, uh we need to work with council in order to get those grants. Um again, we welcome the opportunity to work with council to 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 bring that money in. And also, we we as an organisation would like to, we we have a a nest egg that 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 we would like to work with council with to bring the best facilities to the area.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr Singh. Um much as I remind everybody else around making declarations mid-meeting. Um it has just um occurred to me that as the mayor of Randwick, I'm actually an honorary uh patron of EFSA. Uh and as a result, I'd like to make a non-significant and non-buccunary uh declaration, please. I will of course be voting on the matter.
Mister Mayor, you've just reminded me. I'm actually a patron of the men's, yeah, the men's uh league of ESFA. So I will say declare that I will be voting on the matter.
Non-significant, non-buccunary?
Non-buccunary, yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh there being no uh further, um. Uh there being no further matters, what I will do is I will go to Mayor. Uh there being no further matters, what I will do is I will go to merrill minutes. Um what I might actually ask though, is that we have just a procedural motion just to reorder the merrill minutes. Uh to begin with M M thirty-two slash twenty-three, and we'll deal with M M thirty-one slash twenty-three just after the break. Um, uh so to begin with, uh M M thirty-two slash uh tw- oh, sorry. Can I have a procedural motion to do that? Uh, thank you, moved councillor Hay, councillor Rosenfeld, all those in favour, all those against? Thank you. Um, beginning with M M thirty-two slash uh twenty-three. It is a thank you uh on behalf of the elected council uh for the Heffron Centre. Um and the completion of that, I will now go to it. Thank you. Uh, thank you councillors, um I have a hand up from councillor Olive and councillor Rosenfeld. Um, no, Rosenfeld, thank you. Uh look, on behalf of all councillors, I'd actually like to um formally congratulate uh the Randwick City Council staff. Who have uh very tirelessly worked on the Heffron Centre project, uh stretching back uh over a decade. Uh I have to say that as um a Randwick uh city councillor, I am immensely proud to have played. Uh a role, a small role, uh over many years in this particular uh, a project. But i- in my view, that role pales in uh significance to the ongoing, uh, uh, in quite significant work. Uh, uh by staff, uh, uh over many, many years. Um, there, there are some pretty uh spectacular achievements which have been um, uh. Uh, uh, under this particular project, some of them which are noted in this minute, the fact that it is Randwick's largest ever capital project. Uh the fact that uh it was delivered earlier this year, uh that we have managed to snag uh the uh iconic South Sydney. Uh Rabidows uh from their historic uh home at Redfern to uh the home of their supporter base. In the heart of, of Marubra, uh to, for the fact that we have managed to deliver. Um a capital project of uh this size uh within, uh within budget, I think is uh quite spectacular. And the fact that there is over three hundred and forty thousand dollars remaining within the project's uh contingency. Uh the fact that we had uh thousands upon thousands show up. Uh at the uh community day as a celebratory opening, and, and both the prime minister. Uh and the premier uh deemed it appropriate to um, to join in that community celebration and the opening of that uh project, I think is. Uh not only an endorsement uh of uh their faith in uh the, the project itself, but in the individuals who have delivered that. And uh, I, I think that uh there are um really um significant plaudits which are uh, are deserved. To those who have worked uh over many, many years uh on it. Uh and not only that, uh the feedback on the actual centre itself from the community to me has been. Uh, uh near unanimous uh in, in applause in terms of uh not just of thanks uh for the project. Uh but also uh for, um for the fact that they've been so impressed that uh, uh council. Uh working alongside state uh and federal government, uh the South Sydney Rabidows, as well as our project partners. Uh have been able to deliver um a, a facility of that scale. Uh look, I won't call out individual staff members in- individually, with the exception of one, uh which is Hayley Seadon, who has worked. Uh on this particular project uh from start to finish, uh and over a decade is quite a spectacular achievement. And I'm sure something which she uh as an individual can be proud, uh as well as an individual uh sitting to my left. Who also um can be very, very proud. Um it is for these reasons, uh I would like to commend the merrill minute, and I think that um it is uh very well deserved uh of Randwick council staff. Uh of congratulations on uh our largest capital project ever. Um I have a, I have a hand up from councillor Olive, Rosenfeld, and then Sid. Councillor Olive.
Uh yes, uh and uh congratulations to the staff that put in a, a lot of hard work. But I'd like to make an amendment um to this. Uh Mister Kelly, could you bring that up, please? Um, just that I think that, you know, sort of uh it's customary, you know, sort of in projects to recognise the funders of a particular project. And that hasn't been done in this merrill minute at all. And so, you know, sort of I wanted to um put, you know, sort of uh. Point B and slip all the other ones down, you know, sort of um to C D and uh going down. That um, uh if it's not coming up there, I will try and read what, more or less what I've got. Um that um, that the other major funders of this project were the federal and state governments. Uh this project was, you know, sort of um largely uh government-funded and uh, yeah. And so, you know, so I think that that has to be recognised, that this is uh largely a public sector project. And so I'd love to just pop that in there. Um.
W- w- without it coming up, just to confirm, just so, uh point B becomes C, all other. Come, go down, but that the project was partially funded by the state and federal governments, is that correct?
No, uh, the uh.
State, federal.
The major funders of this project uh were the state and federal governments.
Uh and the South Sydney Rabidows, is that correct?
Uh, well, I mean, if you.
Uh as the in- as the intention of your amendment?
No, not necessarily. It's uh, I'm, uh, people who put in the major component of the funding and sort of. Uh but you could put in South Sy- South Sydney if you wish, yeah.
Okay.
Uh noting that the major contributors, because they were the major contributors, were the federal and state governments and council, so.
Okay.
It was ninety-five percent, nearly ninety-five percent public funds that paid for this.
Okay, so can I confirm? So the amendment would read that the major contributors were the federal, state, uh federal and state governments. South Sydney Rabidows and council. Is that, is that right? Are you happy with that?
Uh, I, I just, I, just as a point, not, the point B, uh the major contributors, uh, uh. The other, uh, the major contributors, contributors of this project were uh the federal, uh. We, 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 what's the, um noting the major contributors were the federal, uh noting the ma-. Noting the other major contributors were the federal and state governments that's. On this project.
I believe that. Is there, sorry, hold on, is there a seconded to this, seconded to councillor by councillor Veitch? Um, okay, I saw a hand up from councillor Sid in there. So, no, it's all right.
If it states that other major contributors, yes, that's correct. But I thought the actual thing was the major contributor was the state and federal government, which is not true. We actually paid the majority.
Yeah, no, yeah, it's half.
Uh, it should say, um, the, because it's point B, because all recog- all way, already recognises that uh. Council is the larger, largest ever capital project. So the other major contributors.
Being state, federal and.
And federal government.
Okay, and, and I, I would be happy to accept and incorporate it into the amendment. If the other major contributors being the state, sorry, federal, state governments. And the South Sydney Football Club.
I think that um we can recognise that the uh federal and state put in a lot more than, you know, sort of South Sydney.
So I, I. So the que- the question I have for you, if I were to accept the amendment in that form, do you still wish to move your amendment?
Uh, no. Oh, I wish to, I wish to move my amendment, but not in that form.
Okay, please move your amendment. Uh councillor Veitch is the seconder.
Uh, it's, it's clear for anyone who's been on council, either on this term or last term, though we didn't get that many reports in this term, that. Federal government, uh from recollection, contributed sixteen million, uh again, I could be wrong, state government, ten. Ran- the Rabidows only contributed four million dollars. Council contributed three. I argued at the time that there was probably another five million in there, which was never accounted for, which became the contingency. So that's a matter of record.
Um, are there any further speakers on the amendment? There being no further speakers on the amendment, um, okay, I'll now put the amendment. So as I do not accept the amendment, I'll now put the amendment, uh all those in favour of the amendment. So, yes, sorry, there's a question from councillor Hamilton.
A question to you, Mister Mayor. If the amendment doesn't get up, were you still considering adding in a comment? Something similar, but with the wording that you would deem appropriate to add to this particular comment?
If you'd like to foreshadow that as an amendment, I would happily accept it.
Okay, I'll foreshadow.
Thank you very much. Uh, there being no further speakers on the proposed amendment, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? I declare the amendment lost. Thank you very much. Uh councillor Hamilton.
I'll put an amendment to add noting the other major contributors on this project were the federal, state governments and.
South Sydney.
South Sydney Rabidows.
Thank you, I will accept that and incorporate it into the merrill minute. Um. You, you, you did councillor Rosenfeld. Uh, thank you. Um councillor Rosenfeld, um and then I'll go to councillor Sid, and then I had councillor Hamilton, then I'll go to councillor Chapel. And councillor Veitch.
Yeah, just to support uh Mister Mayor, um it's a shining beacon, Heffron Centre's a shining beacon for the Randwick L G A and Central Ward. Uh, yes, Central Ward. Uh, and um, um, it's a fantastic facility, someone who used to use the old sporting centre a lot, playing indoor cricket. It's incredible how much better it is these days. And I, I, it brings joy to me when I walk past it with my dog and I see athletes going and enjoying themselves uh in the centre. Uh and so, um yeah, congratulations to the council and especially to you, Todd, uh for your hard work on it.
Thank you. Uh councillor Sid.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'd just like to also thank the staff. Uh being the mayor at the time, we did go through a lot of trials and tribulations, a lot of late nights, especially the staff. Um, we made, they made sure they dotted the i's and crossed the t's and made sure this was the uh ultimate perfection in, in uh. And tried and strive for perfection in, in a government council building. Um, I also want to thank the uh, the councillors at the time that we all stuck true, uh we got it through. Um again, a lot of us went through uh a few emails and things that we shouldn't deserve. But overall, I'd really like to thank the uh past general manager. Because at the time, she got a thirty-eight million dollar loan, and correct me if I'm wrong, if my figures aren't a hundred percent correct. At about two percent capped at thirty-eight years. And as I've talked to people in state government, in the, in the loans department, in T Corp, it's unheard of. That is the loan of the century, and I still, no one still knows till this day how it is possible. And with interest rates now at whatever, five percent, six percent, it is the actual most amazing thing. So I still want to thank the past general manager for getting that loan, cause I don't think at seven percent we'd be uh. Still, we would not be in front. But thank you very much to the staff and, and to everyone else.
Thank you. Uh councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I, um, you know, I think this is a fantastic merrill minute. It is well deserved. The, the accolades and the, and the recognition for those contributors is well deserved. I don't want to take anything away from Randwick council staff. This is a major development that we all should be extremely proud of, proud of their efforts. Uh proud of the relationship with South Sydney Rabidows. I can see this um continuing to be something that we are extremely proud of for many, many years to come. So well done to everyone, and thank you for bringing this merrill minute.
Thank you. Uh I now move to councillor Chapel.
Thank you. Um I just want to echo um the other uh contributions around the table. There was clearly a lot of staff work put into this um over many, many years, um including the former general manager. Um and we want to recognise that. Um I mainly had a question actually, which is because I haven't been on council for this entire project. Um I would love to get an actual overview of the entire financials, cause I don't think I've ever seen them. Um and I'd love to, um, I don't know if this is a briefing or maybe just some material provided to councillors, like. Get what our initial estimate was and get kind of where the money came from over time. Um and how it was dispersed, including legals and other costs. Um and then what our contingency was, um you know, and how we managed to deliver it under that. Because I know we had significant adverse weather events, I'd be really interested to see how we did such a good job.
Uh, thank you. I'm gonna throw a Dorothy Dixon to the um, uh director of city services. Um to assist with um some questions which were raised by councillor Chapel.
Through yourself, Mister Mayor, we're currently in the process of closing out the, the project with an external um audit from an external firm. Which will uh cover all the finances from, from beginning to end that will be uh brought back to council.
Uh, thank you councillor Veitch.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Look, as everyone knows, I've always had serious reservations about some elements of this, of this project. Um, you know, there was the Banarong Gymnastics, were a very proud club in our community. Uh who'd operated here for over forty years. Uh Kim Rosen, the former president uh of Banarong Gymnastics, had been uh an Olympic judge at the Barcelona Olympics. She was passionate about the sport of gymnastics and the thousands of mostly girls who, who went through there. Um I personally felt it was a tragedy that we lost that club from our L G A. Uh unfortunately, the staff report that we received at the time did not recommend them as the preferred uh group to run it. There was negligible difference between them and the preferred tenderer, uh and council also did not support them. We have lost that club. Um, if that would never happen to Marubra United. You know, Marubra Surf Club, it would be unthinkable, yeah. It was fine to get rid of a girls' club after forty years. Um and, you know, hopefully one day we can get them back. There were over three hundred submissions when the D A uh went to the planning panel, the Sydney, Eastern Sydney Planning Panel. Um raising so many concerns about the design of the gymnastics, that it was so much smaller than what that community. Were always under the very, very strong impression that they were going to receive. No one ever disabused them of that illusion while the uh rate increase was on public exhibition. And thus we received many, many emails from the gymnastics community in support of the project. Because they were under the strong belief that they were getting, they were going to be delivered. A fit-for-purpose, increased-in-size gymnastics facility, uh and that is not what they got. That is why I personally voted in support of a twenty percent rate increase. Which we never got. So we don't, we are not getting any rent from Souths for at least twenty-one years. We will receive no rental income. They have got two hundred thousand dollars worth of solar panels sitting up on the Souths roof. They will not be charged any electricity. They will be getting free electricity. Those solar panels should have probably gone on a park, car park in Heffron Park, that would have benefited the community or the Des Redford Centre or something. So this is not a perfect picture. Great, many people will like it. But there's a lot of people that have been left out of this picture, and I believe that there should be some acknowledgement in this community of the contribution. Of Banarong Gymnastics, uh and all the work that they did over those years, and it's very disappointing that they've never been acknowledged.
Uh, thank you. I, it's actually councillor De Souza, then I have councillor Burst.
Mister Mayor, there's an old saying, where there's no vision, the people perish. And I too want to take this opportunity to, to acknowledge the hard work of Mister Brownlee, our former and now present general manager. As I got the light rail today again, I thought about Mister Brownlee. Some of the projects that were started and achieved in this time were major, massive. And Heffron Centre is another good example. Not only, not only did we get funding from three tiers of government, which is an achievement in itself. To get three tiers of government working together to get one outcome. So it was great, yes. My friend Todd Clark and the other members of them made it all happen. We had a hiatus, we had a change of general manager, et cetera. Things could have got pear-shaped, but because of the strong leadership that was sowed in our workers. The plan was set, the money was attained, the vision was there. And we accomplished great things. And I want to take this opportunity, Mister Mayor, to thank you, Mister Brownlee. Toddie Clark and the rest of the team who made it possible. I, I, I live in Matriville, I saw it slowly growing. It, it's like a little seedling, it got bigger and bigger, till eventually it's become. The, one of the biggest, if not the best, project we have in Randwick City. And thank you, thank you, Mister Brownlee, thank you, Toddie, thanks, Mister Mayor, for making this happen for our community. We always boast about a sense of community, well, this definitely will make. Reinforce that and make it, if it hasn't happened, make it happen. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you councillor De Souza, councillor Burst. Ki- tha- thank you councillor Burst. If you have to fall, you'll be heard in silence. Thank you.
Um I'd just like to second councillor Hamilton's amendment, and um I think it's time to put it.
Um I'd just like to second councillor Hamilton's amendment, and um I think it's time to put it.
It it it's been, it's been accepted. Um, yep. Uh I I don't think there are any further speakers. There being no further speakers. Uh look councillors, um look, I commend, I commend the merrill minute. Uh and I I appreciate the um significant contributions which have been made uh by various councillors and. And I think it actually reflects the seriousness and and deep appreciation that we have uh for the hard work. Uh over many, many years of Ram with council in delivering this uh fantastic uh community asset that we can all be proud. So I commend the merrill minute uh to the council. All those in favour? All those against? I declare it carried. Thank you. Uh councillors, we now move on to M M thirty three slash twenty three, financial assistance and donations. Uh I take the merrill minute as read.
Excuse me, Mister Mayor. Can I just make a comment that some people are in the gallery waiting for the matters that they spoke about to be addressed?
Uh yes.
It won't come for quite some time.
Yes, so for those who are waiting uh in the gallery, what we're doing is we're working down the agenda. Uh on the business paper, there should be copies of the business paper which are available outside if you'd like uh to follow them. Um we're now on M M thirty three slash twenty three, financial assistance and donations. I take this merrill minute as read. Uh are there any speakers? There being no speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Okay, I've just skipped over one. Um but thank you. Um all those against? Okay, declare that carried. Thank you. No, it's it's fine, that's fine. Um we now move to M M thirty four slash twenty three. Uh naming the Rogers Brothers Pool and Opening Event. Uh I take the merrill minute as read. Uh there's a question from councillor Chapel.
Uh just a very brief question. It notes that we're gonna be putting a name up. Will we put a plaque somewhere? Because I disgracefully had not heard of these guys and that sounds like a really cool yarn.
Um through through to the relevant officer. Uh the general manager is advised, yes. Uh thank you. Are there any other speakers? There being ca- councillor Hay? Note, there being no further speakers. And I put it, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. We now move to M M thirty five slash twenty three. Uh ideas to improve uh safety for rock fishers. Uh councillors, uh I uh would be commend this merrill minute uh to the council. It comes to me um uh via uh what I have to say is uh rather tra- tragic circumstances. Is the product of correspondence from an individual who um very tragically lost uh her uh husband uh and her son. Uh in a uh very uh very, I have to say tragic, uh and quite shocking uh rock fishing uh incident. Uh in January of twenty twenty two at Little Bay. Uh and uh she's uh r- written to me, uh Hasty uh has written to me um uh conveying her pain. Uh but also um hoping to channel uh that uh personal loss uh for um for good. Uh to see that uh no no further individuals are lost um along our coast uh uh fishing. Uh with a suggestion that at the point of sale, um that there should be advisory signage. Uh of both uh the risks of uh recreational rock fishing. Uh but also to direct people uh to uh the appropriate uh ways uh in which they can purchase uh safety equipment. Uh this merrill minute is the product of that and I'd like to thank um council um staff member, Mister Josh Hay, our manager of communications. Who has um for several years uh been a a a one man point person for uh rock fishing uh safety. Uh and uh what this uh merrill minute uh seeks to do is to give its in principle support to the idea of requiring. That rock fishing safety information be displayed at the point of sale. Uh and to write uh to the relevant minister within the New South Wales Government to advocate uh on uh on uh. On the, on behalf of this particular idea. Um uh already, uh it has been canvassed uh in uh the media and has received as uh in principle support. From both Surf Life Saving New South Wales, uh as well as um the uh recreational fishing. Um A- A- Association of New South Wales, which I think is really um quite uh commendable um uh thing to have received. Uh to come from uh a very powerful story of an individual who uh very tragically lost a family member. Um I was uh asked, will will this uh be be enough? Uh the answer to that is I I don't know. Uh however, if it it saves just one life, I think that it is a um a a a measure worth uh seriously investigating and pushing for. So uh for that, for those reasons, I commend this merrill minute to the council floor. Are there any further speakers? Thank you. There being no further speakers, I will now put the merrill minute. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to uh M M uh thirty six twenty three. Uh his uh helicopter rescue service uh fiftieth anniversary event, which I will be moving in a slightly amended fashion. Uh Mister Kelly, could you please pull up the particular amendment? Thank you. It has a point A and a point B. Uh a point A reads that the fees for the fiftieth anniversary event. Of the launch of the rescue helicopter service at Maruba be waived. Uh and B, uh acknowledge and endorse a temporary public art mural uh of the Westpac helicopter on the exterior north facing elevation of the Maruba Life Saving Club. To celebrate the fiftieth year commemoration of the helicopter. Um I am advised uh through the director of city services uh where, who has uh served as the conduit of this particular request. Uh that that would be uh to no cost uh to the council. Uh the uh rescue helicopter provides um an exceptional service uh to our community. It has done so for a a a long, a very long period of time, uh and has saved countless lives. Uh and a recognition of this significant anniversary, I think, is only fitting uh for council to waive the fees which are associated with that. Uh as well as to give uh its endorsement of the mural alongside the Maruba Surf Life Saving uh club. Uh and it is for these reasons that I commend uh the merrill minute to uh the floor. Before I hand over, are there any speakers? I actually have a declaration to make and I'm just gonna continue. Um that I am a member of the Maruva Maruba Surf Life Saving Club uh as a um active patrolling member. Um however, I do not hold any executive positions in the club. It is a non-significant, non-pccinary interest. Okay, thank you. Are there any speakers? Councillor Rosenfeld?
Yeah, I support that and I agree, North Face is probably the best uh side of the club. Because that's basically uh where the majority of people um tend to res- uh to to recreate around uh Maruba Beach. So uh yep, a hundred percent.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Chapel?
Sorry, just the obligatory, I'd love to see the Westpac branding not too large on there.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now go to the supplementary business paper. Uh so there's a, there is a, we moved a procedural motion to push it. So we'll, we'll go through the rest of the supplementary merrill minutes. Uh and then what we will do is we'll then have a short break and then we'll deal with that as the first item afterwards. Thank you. So the uh last um supplementary business paper is M M thirty seven slash twenty three. Uh World Suicide Prevention Day twenty twenty three Could You Bench event. Uh I take the merrill minute as read. Are there any questions, speakers? Okay, thank you. There being no further speakers, I will now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Uh we will deal with the confidential one in the confidential session at the end. Um councillors, I'm proposing that we take a ten minute break. Uh and we return at eight thirty P M. Thank you.
Thank you councillors. Thank you, I now reopen the Randwick Council meeting at eight thirty-five P M. Thank you, due to the procedural, due to the procedural motion, which I believe has moved Rosenfeld Hay to reorder the business paper, we are now returning to M M thirty-one slash twenty-three Culture on Country event at the La Perouse on the twenty-sixth of January twenty twenty-four. After we go through that item, we will then call through each of the items in Seri Adam for councillors to challenge them. Those who are waiting on motions pursuant to notice, they will then, once we've gone through the staff reports, we will then go through each item one by one, followed by a confidential session. Councillors, I move to M M thirty-two slash twenty, thirty-one slash twenty-three, which I will be moving in a slightly amended fashion. The current motion reads that Randwick Council approves the continuation of the event Culture on Country on Country at La Perouse on the twenty-sixth of January twenty twenty-four to be primarily funded from the twenty-three twenty-four contingency fund and to be continued thereafter as part of the council annual events calendar and budget. The amended motion, which I will move, reads that Council One approves the continuation of the event Culture on Country on Country at La Perouse on the twenty-sixth of January twenty twenty-four to be funded from two thousand dollars from the community development budget, two thousand dollars from the La Perouse museum budget and thirty-six dollars and five hundred and fifty dollars from the twenty-three, thirty-six thousand. Thank you very much councillors. I'm glad, I'm glad you picked me up because I would have moved it incorrectly. And thirty-six thousand five hundred and fifty from the twenty twenty-three twenty twenty-four Knox Sculpture Walk funds and to be continued thereafter as part of the council annual events calendar and budget. And two, that a one hundred and ninety thousand allocation is made for the twenty-four twenty-five budget for an event targeted to occur between July to September twenty twenty-four in place of Knox. I commend the mayoral minute, are there any speakers? Excellent, there being no speakers, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against, I declare it carried, thank you. We will now move down, actually councillors, is there any urgent business? Okay, there being no urgent business, thank you, we now move down the staff reports. As I'm looking down, could you please call out if you wish to challenge an item? G M seven slash twenty-three Final Quarterly Progress Report, April to June twenty twenty-three. Can I just confirm a challenge by councillor Poundafini? Thank you. C P twenty-four slash twenty-three Development Application Service Review. A challenge by councillor Olive. C P twenty-five slash twenty-three V P A Letter of Offer for sixteen to eighteen Rainbow Street, Kingsford. As it's a planning matter, we will challenge it, can I just have somebody challenge it, challenge to Suza? Okay, C P twenty-six twenty-three, as it's a planning matter, can I have somebody, okay, Rosenfeld. Okay, C P twenty-seven twenty-three V P A Letter of Offer, three ninety to three ninety-six Anzac Parade, Kensington, councillor Burst, thank you. Okay, C P twenty-eight slash twenty-three Eastern Suburbs E V Infrastructure Strategy, challenged by councillor Olive. C P twenty-nine slash twenty-three Variations to Development Standards under Clause four point six. Challenged by councillor Chapel. C P thirty, as it's a planning matter, challenged by councillor Nielsen. C S thirty-two slash twenty-three Draft Randwick City Council Place Based Strategy, challenged by councillor Chapel. Goodness, C S thirty-three, challenged by councillor Rosenfeld, Neil jumped out of his chair. C C seventeen slash twenty-three Update on the Knox Knights Sculpture Work Funds, proposed first nation event. Okay, challenged by. Okay. Okay. C C eighteen slash twenty-three Alfresco Randwick, challenged by councillor Hay and Chapel, okay, thank you. C C nineteen slash twenty-three Community Partnerships Programme twenty twenty-three. It actually requires an election of an option, so I will need somebody to challenge it, councillor Hamilton. C C twenty slash. Okay, councillor Burst. Okay, C C twen- C C O thirty-eight slash twenty-three Budget Carryovers. Thank you. Unchallenged, C O thirty-nine slash twenty-three Investment Report, challenged by councillor Olive. C O forty slash twenty-three Month, challenged by councillor Chapel. It's all right, C O forty-one slash twenty-three Draft Financial Statements. I was nearly about to say move the unchallenged item, but I, I call for a mover of the unchallenged items. Councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Say. C S thirty-five. Where is this?
In the supplementary business paper.
Ah, okay, no, it's a tender, so we have to deal with that separately. Yeah, in a, in a confidential session, okay, thank you. The mover of the unchallenged items, I believe was Rosenfeld said. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you. We now move to the first challenged item, G M seven slash twenty-three Final Quarterly Progress Report. Councillor Pendles Feeny, could you please outline what is you're moving?
Um, yeah, I'm not moving anything, I just have some questions.
Just before you do that, can I get a mover of them, okay, councillor Hamilton to move councillor, can I get a seconder? Councillor Chapel, thank you, I take it you waive your rights, councillor Pendlefeeny to ask you a question.
Yeah, through the relevant officer, on the key activities summary, there's the noted here is the construction of Meek Street Plaza is complete and an opening event was held. I've been passed quite a lot recently, I've just been in, working in the area. And I have noted that, you know, it's fantastic that it is completed, but to me it does not seem um completely complete. There's no shade there, there's nothing there except this, you know, a couple of seats, you know. I was, I'm not sure that I saw the original design, but there's no kind of bite cracks, there's no colour, there's no shade, there's no, there's nothing there, yeah.
Through to the Director of City Services.
Thanks, through yourself, Mister Mayor. Some time ago, I met the ward councillors on site just seeking feedback, all the feedback was provided in relation to the finished product at Meek Street, as a result of that feedback. The community and culture team and city services have been looking at further interventions to, to further activate the space in line with that feedback. We have since discussed some of those elements with the Chamber of Commerce and the best way to discuss some of the interventions with the shop owners in the, in the, in the area and then following those conversations in collaboration with councillors will discuss the, the next stage.
Thank you, councillor Pendlefeeny with a follow-up?
Yeah, I just wanted to get like a vague idea of some of those, what those interventions meant, like, they're like permanent things or are they more just activities?
Director of City Services.
Through yourself, Mister Mayor, permanent.
Thank you councillor Chapel.
Thanks Mister Mayor, I really appreciate receiving this extremely comprehensive document quarterly. But I have to say, I find it, and I don't know if any other councillors find this, but I find it fairly overwhelming to get all of this information in one go and not kind of do it in the context of a workshop or something where we can at least quarterly or twice a year talk through what the indicators actually mean and where we should have concerns. I mean, it is, as councillors, kind of our, part of our role to have a proper understanding and oversight of what's going on here and the, you know, green, orange, red system does give us some idea, but it doesn't always give us the justification for why things might be running over. Stuff that's completed may not feel complete and things like that, so this is just a, a general kind of request that consideration be given to, to some kind of briefing process around these, not, you know, not every quarter, not on everything in there, but just so we can really be doing our jobs to understand it properly.
Thank you, through to the general manager.
Thanks Mister Mayor, yes, that will be done.
Thank you, are there any further speakers, there being councillor Burst.
I've actually just got one question, on page sixteen, we look at the, the progress, the performance tracking against target value. How come we've got nothing in progress in the last quarter? Page sixteen of.
Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you Mister Mayor, because that's the end of the financial year, so that's, the progress is the first, so these reports come to council every three months. So the progress on the first quarter followed to the second quarter, followed the third quarter and the last quarter is no more progress, they finish off this particular year. So it's cut off there, then next quarter there'll be the start of the, but the, yeah, the performance measures just did then, there'll be progress sent to first three quarters and the last quarter there won't be.
So generally the first quarter always have a bigger.
Yes.
Yellow and then it gets lower.
Yes.
And then it goes back up again, yeah, cool.
Okay, thank you, there being no further speakers, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you. We now move to C P twenty-four twenty-three Development Application Service Review, challenged by councillor Olive. Could you please outline what is you're moving?
Uh, yes, Mister Kelly, do you want to plop the, um, motion that I sent you, please? Just to explain, the first part of this is just to say that the report for the service level review should also come.
Sorry, can, can I just interrupt, councillor Olive, have you actually sent through your amendments to Mister Kelly?
Oh, I did this afternoon, I.
That, that's okay, if you have your amendments in front of you, if you could slowly read out what it is that you're seeking to move in an amended fashion, or you've got it? Okay, thank you, could you please outline what is you're seeking to move, he's, he's found it, but if you could just run us through it, it'd be fantastic.
Yeah, it's just that, you know, sort of, it says that the key, and I think the intention was that it would come back to council, the service level review report, but it was not absolutely clear, so I spoke with Kerry and said, put this, continue to put this through. But I'm just making it clear that, you know, sort of in October, it will come back to, it will go to Eric for them to review and then, I'm sorry, in September it'll go to Eric, then in October it will come here for the council to, to look at the, the service level review and then it will be implemented subsequent to that. So that, that's just first outlining that, is that, that's relatively clear and straightforward. Yeah, and the, the second, the second part of this motion is, and I was told that this was the appropriate place to put it because I had another, is that council, I'm just gonna have to go back up again. That council investigates placing residence submissions for D A's online and accessible by D A tracker. So this is what they do in, in other councils, that when people put in submissions around a D A that, that can be viewed online, it would have some, you know, sort of redactions of names, it would have to have permission. There may be some other things, but this is just asking for an investigation by council staff to see that that's feasible and then for it to come back to council. So, is anyone gonna second that?
Thank you, is there a seconder? Seconded councillor Nielsen?
I think that councillor Olive has picked up some very good points and I think the way that it's moved in this particular way is very, very good.
Thank you, are there any further speakers, councillor Said?
Just a question Mister Mayor, in point B, would, then would every single someone who had a submission would have to, maybe there be obvious if you retracted the names, but you said the easily sun would be blocked and I really don't like my neighbour, blah, 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 and then it goes online. So if you got a point of where you could actually say, I don't want this to go online? Or is it automatically have to if you, it becomes a motion?
Through to the Director of City Planning.
Thank you Mister Mayor, those sort of submissions to a D A would only really be able to be accessed under Government Information and Public Access Act application. So the fact that the issues are being raised in a submission wouldn't be a category by which you would refuse access. So instead of going through the GIPR application to access it, the personal information will be redacted and the content will remain on the website.
Thank you, are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers, I will now, councillor Olive, do you wish to close the. Uh, oh, okay, there being no further speakers, uh, I will now, uh, councillor Olive, do you wish to close the debate? Okay, thank you. I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? I don't think it does. Yeah, it's, it's unanimous anyway. Th- thank you. Um, thank you, the advice is, division was not required. Okay, I declare it carried. Thank you. Um, uh, C P twenty five slash twenty three, V P A letter of offer, uh, sixteen to eighteen Rainbow Street. Uh, moved by councillor D'Souza. Thank you. I take it that you're moving as per the business paper. Uh, can I have a seconda councillor? Um, I saw Rosenfeld first. Um, as the seconda, do you wish to speak to it? Okay, thank you, uh. Yep, thank you. Councillor, uh, Veitch, could you please outline what is you're moving? My apologies.
Um, I've sent it through to Mister Kelly. Um, it's that we delete point A and B. Um, and I won't read it out all verbatim, it's up there on the screen. But essentially it's noting that, you know, we are well over our capa- um, target of additional dwellings. Um, that capacity is almost a hundred percent being taken up. By commercial student accommodation and boarding house developments. Um, you may not have noted some of the, the details of the plans, but these are essentially. Twenty, uh, twelve to twenty five meter square tiny studios. Majority of them are around twelve to sixteen square metres, which is miniscule. Uh, they're not actually affordable. If you do any kind of survey, particularly of student housing and these types of developments around Sydney. They, uh, the rent is astronomical there, like about six hundred and fifty dollars a week. Um, which is unaffordable for students, unaffordable for people on low incomes and probably unaffordable for people on average incomes. Um, they're not accessible for people with a disability. Um, and they're not, as you would have noted in the, in the, uh, the letter from the mayor. Uh, sent through to the planning minister a few weeks ago. Um, they're not actually classified as private dwellings. They're excluded from state government housing targets. So even though we've got over two thousand dwellings approved. Um, none of them, the vast majority of these are not being counted against our housing targets. And I understand that the mayor said we shouldn't be, argued that they shouldn't be counted as our housing targets, but I would argue to the contrary. We actually need housing that people can live in and that's affordable, you know. Um, we are going to be stuck with these developments, thousands of these tiny studios. Uh, that are going to be unlivable and unaffordable for most people and we are completely precluding any ability. To get desirable, suitable housing in probably the most accessible part of our L G A. Um, they're locking it out. So there's so many issues with these developments. It's really time to call it now. And so I'm asking, uh, that we basically write to the planning minister. Call these things out, call for a moratorium. These are for-profit commercial developments. If, if you look it up, they're very desirable. Investment instruments. Uh, you know, some of these things can deliver like a, a ten percent return over time. Um, our community is going to get nothing from this. We support students domestic, we support international students. Um, but I can tell you, I've met a lot of these students and, you know, I won't go into detail here. But the type of employment that some of these students are having to go to, uh, is completely unsuitable. To be able to afford these types of things. Uh, so I will be moving the same amendments for the three V P As, uh, that are on the business papers tonight. Thank you, councillors.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda first for the amendment? S- seconded councillor Olive. Thank you as the, uh, seconda, and then I'll go to councillor Nielsen.
Uh, councillor Veitch, are you, um, wanting us to, um. Pass A B and C, and A B and then your amendment becomes point C?
No, councillor Hamilton, it might have been missed in the thing, but it was actually delete point A and B, was delete point A and B.
Okay, you, so just hold, hold on, you withdraw it. Uh, i- is there a seconda for the amendment? There being no seconda for the amendment, it lapses. Uh, why? Councillor Olive did attempt, it did, it did. Councillor Olive is the seconda? Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers on the amendment? Councillor D'Souza, do you accept the amendment?
I'm happy to do it as an additional point.
Right.
Mister Mayor.
Okay, um, councillor Veitch, would you accept having your amendment incorporated as additional points? Okay, you do? Okay, thank you. Um, uh, okay, councillor Veitch withdraws the amendment. Uh, there is then a hand up on, from councillor Sid, I believe, and are there any further speakers on the debate? No, no, it is, but then now we're on debate on the motion again, as moved by councillor D'Souza. Councillor Sid.
Sorry, Mister Mayor, I've just questions to the, because I, the intent is fine. Does this actually, now that it is the motion, are we assuming that we still gonna let it go through? But we write to it that it's not really doing our L G A any favours, is that?
Um.
So it won't hamper, because in the status of the application. Yes, we're in, yeah. I know that point five's fine, I just don't want to stop it entirely, because it says here that. Okay, as long as it keeps going, because status of application is that we'll lose it all if we stop it.
Through, there's just a question through to the relevant officer as to the implications of this amendment, whether it's the general manager or the director of city planning, who'd like to clarify for us?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, the, the effect of the motion would be, um, to, to write them to the minister, um, and, um. Uh, demonstrate the, the numbers of, um, uh, co-living and student accommodation developments that have occurred in the area, um. And, um, to the point where they perhaps are hindering, um, the provision of, um, private, um, dwellings. Uh, within the particular town centres and to consider the possibility of a moratorium over a period of time for. Council to look at perhaps other strategies to encourage, um, more private dwelling investment.
There's a question from councillor Veitch.
So there's a very specific intent in the wording of this motion, and I guess if it's being moved, I have to be clear that. The council staff will affect the council resolution and not sort of an interpretation of it. It, it's very clear that it's calling for a moratorium, calling for more public housing and noting all these things, so. It's not just passing them to consider or, or maybe, you know, it's.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? Uh, councillor Olive on the debate? Councillor Olive, your question.
Um, just may as well do it here as anywhere. Um, I just wondered, is there a, a plan of, a plan of management, you know, sort of, uh. A plan of, uh, traffic, uh, management, you know, sort of, uh, that accompanies, you know, sort of these, uh, new builds. I just noticed that, you know, sort of each of them has, you know, sort of thirty something to forty something, uh, vehicles. Yeah, spaces, car spaces, and so this is cast, these are car spaces where there, I assume there weren't that many car spaces previously. And so, you know, sort of, how, how will that actually affect the traffic management of the, of the area? I mean, have we got some kind of overall, you know, sort of, um, uh, management plan for traffic?
Through to the relevant officer.
Um, thank you, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, in preparation of the Kensington and Kingsford, uh, strategies was a planning proposal. There were, uh, traffic and parking studies undertaken and as part of that process, there was identified particular rates of parking. For certain types of development, be it commercial or, or residential, um, and then the D C P requires a certain amount of parking. Provided on each of the developments, so, um, this development would be, um, consistent with those, those requirements.
Through to, um, councillor Olive with a follow up?
Yeah, I, I was just wondering, you know, sort of not about, you know, sort of whether, you know, sort of, uh, the number, there can be, you know. The necessary number of car parks, um, provided per dwelling, but how that affects the arterial roads and how that. You know, affects the traffic and the, you know, sort of, if they're all coming out in the morning, you know, sort of at, uh, at nine o'clock, you know, so how's that going to affect? You know, sort of the, um, the, the gridlock in the area, will that create gridlock in the area?
Thank you. Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. The traffic study that was undertaken looked at the potential, um, increase in density and. And the traffic generation, uh, rates during, um, peak times, um, and didn't identify, um, an issue. With the numbers affecting, um, um, the intersections. There were some, um, upgrades required for a couple of intersections. In terms of Barker Street, but overall, um, um, it was anticipated the motor split towards public transport and. And other active transport within the centre, um, wouldn't create an adverse impact on the traffic network.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor D'Souza, do you wish to close the debate? Okay, thank you. Oh, you, okay, reserves is right. Um, it being a planning matter, uh, we will go straight to a division. Could you please pull up the counter, Mister Kelly? Thank you. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those against? Declare that unanimous. Okay, thank you. We now move to, um. C P twenty six slash twenty three, V P A letter of offer. Four O seven two four eleven Anzac Parade and six Sturt Street, Kingsford, uh, challenged by councillor Rosenfeld. Could you please outline what is you're moving?
Uh, as per the business paper?
Thank you. Can I have a seconda? Councillor Burst is the seconda. Councillor Rosenfeld, do you wish to speak to it?
No.
Thank you. Councillor Burst. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Veitch?
Uh, I'll be moving the same amendment.
Is that necessary? Uh, okay, councillor. Rosenfeld, would you accept that amendment if it was incorporated as additional points, not in substitute off?
Yeah, as long as they're additional as per the Rainbow Street.
Okay, thank you, councillor Veitch. Do you wish to continue to move it? Thank you. That's fine. Um. Uh, okay, councillor Burst.
Has to be additional points to the, the, the existing points can't be taken out.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the matter? Okay, thank you. Councillor Rosenfeld, do you wish to close the debate? Okay, thank you. All those in favour? I actually note, being a planning matter, we've got to a division, um. Ho- hold, okay, Mister Kelly, could you please bring it up? All those in favour? Thank you. All those in favour, all those against? Okay, declare that unanimous. What, it's very hard to tell. I declare that unanimous. Thank you. I gave you a chance, councillor A. Um, all right, we now move to. C P twenty seven slash twenty three, uh, V P A letter of offer, three ninety to three nine six Anzac Parade, Kensington, challenged by councillor Burst. Uh, no, we just dealt with that one, I believe. Uh, C P twenty seven slash twen- unless, that's all right. Um, C P twenty seven slash twenty three, uh, V P A letter of offer, three ninety to three nine six Anzac Parade, Kensington. Challenged by councillor Burst, could you please outline what is you're moving?
Move as per the recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Seconded by councillor Rosenfeld. Councillor Burst, do you wish to speak to it? Thank you, councillor Rosenfeld.
Reserve the right.
Councillor Veitch?
Uh, I'll be moving the same amendments.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Burst, do you, would you incorporate those as additional points?
As long as it's additional points.
Okay, thank you, councillor, uh, councillor Rosenfeld, you still second?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Veitch, do you still wish to move your amendment? Okay, no. Gets incorporated into the motion. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I will now put it. We're going straight to a division. All those in favour, please raise your hand. I, I, I declare that unanimous. Thank you. Um, okay, we, we. Yep, that's fine. Okay, thank you. We now go to C P twenty eight slash twenty three, eastern suburbs electric vehicle infrastructure strategy. Challenged by councillor Olive. Okay, thank you. Is there a seconda? Seconded by councillor D'Souza. Councillor Olive, do you wish to speak to it? Councillor Olive, could you please turn on your microphone? Thank you.
Um, I think there, there are many good things about, you know, sort of, um, uh, this particular vehicle, uh, strategy that's going out. Uh, yeah, electric vehicle strategy, but there are a couple of items which are missing, you know, sort of which, uh. One is that, uh, as a contrast, it doesn't mention that, uh, although it is talking about electric vehicle charging stations. Doesn't mention that, you know, sort of an alternative is to charge from mains at home. I mean, it does say, you know, sort of. That most people will be charging from home with an electric vehicle charging, uh, unit. And it, it gives the, um, the kilowatt speed that it will do that at. But, uh, there will also be a lot of people who'll be, you know, sort of charging, just plugging in, uh, to the, the power socket as well. And that's what, that's what happens quite a bit. So that would be something to mention. But I think the bigger thing is that it doesn't mention about, you know, sort of. Kilowatt cha- charging pricing at all, and that's a, that's a big issue and, you know, sort of, um. When we compare, you know, sort of the, uh, kilowatt charges, we can go for something like, um, if you have at home, you know, sort of. And work, go have a particular service provider do it at a certain time, it could be seven to ten cents a kilowatt. Whereas, you know, sort of, with some, um, uh, rapid chargers, you know, so it could be, uh, sixty something cents. So it could be, you know, ten times as much, you know, in, in the cost. Um, the generally, you know, sort of the, uh, charges that council roll out with Fox Charge are about twenty five cents a kilowatt. And, um, if they, if you go to the fifty, uh, uh, kilowatt charging stations, which are fast chargers, it's forty four cents now. So the, this price, these pricing differences are going to determine to some extent where people are going to choose to charge. I'm not sure what it is for Tesla. But that was something which is not in the document and I think it would have been a good thing to have in the document, something like that. But, you know, sort of, I, I do like the approach that's taken where it's, it does say, you know, sort of. We're not sure which way demand is going to jump, so we have to have our eggs in a few different baskets and we have to be ready and that. I'm, of course, paraphrasing there, but, um, so I like that kind of approach, but I thought it would be better if they'd have added something about. The pricing aspect of, uh, electricity and power.
Thank you, uh, uh, I do, can I, I have to go to the seconda, who was? Councillor D'Souza, councillor D'Souza is the seconda? Okay, no worries. Uh, councillor Sid is, uh, your question.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Just a question to the relevant officer, and I apologize if it is in there and I've missed it. But are all three councils charging exactly the same price per kilowatt?
Thank you. Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Yeah, yes, we are.
Thank you. Um, are there any, uh, councillor Veitch?
Yeah, I just had a question, because something just popped out from one of the previous items, which is this quarterly progress report. Um, which I confess I didn't manage to read the whole thing, but I saw a, a bit of it on page fourteen. And it's sort of noted here at the very last, uh, paragraph under question four that. We unfortunately hadn't achieved our target of installing, uh, batteries. Uh, on council infrastructure, which is certainly something we've been moving towards over the last few years as part of our, uh, target to achieve. Net zero emissions on council, uh, for council operations and then moving to, uh, fairly high targets for community. And we've basically, the, apparently the resources allocated to installing those batteries have been going to the solar, to the E V chargers. And so I really hope that, um. We can actually find the resources to do both in future years and, and, uh, our battery installation is not. Gonna be just dropping off, even though I totally support the E V chargers, so I. Would be great to get a response in the next, you know, period of time, uh, to see how we can progress with the installation of our, of our. period of time, uh, to see how we can progress with the installation of our, of our batteries.
Thank you, through to the general manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, councillor, I'll bring something back to the council.
Thank you. Before I call for any further speakers, a general reminder that all speakers will be heard in silence. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Thank you. Uh, there being no further speakers, councillor Olive, do you wish to close the debate? Okay, thank you, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried, thank you. Uh, CP twenty-nine slash twenty-three Variations to Development Standards under clause four point six, uh, challenged by councillor Chapel.
Yes, uh, I'm happy to move it as per the business paper.
Thank you, can I have a seconda, please? Seconded by councillor Olive, uh, councillor Chapel.
I just wanted to very briefly note that I really appreciate the effort that comes into bringing these to council, and I think it gives us a lot of confidence in what's happening, um, in the system behind the scenes. So just thanks to the relevant officers.
Thank you, councillor Olive is the seconda. Are there any further speakers? I take it that you don't wish to close the debate? All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried, thank you. Uh, CP thirty slash twenty-three Randwick Junction Planning Proposal, uh, challenged by councillor Nielsen. Councillor Nielsen, could you please outline what it is that you are moving, and then I will call for a seconda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm moving it in an amended way. And that is that council defer consideration of this matter for a briefing to address matters raised by the Randwick Local Planning Panel and for the matter to be considered at the September council meeting. So that's what I'm proposing.
Thank you, seconded by councillor D'Souza.
The reason I'm moving it in this way is that, um, when you read the report and so on, there are a lot of very good, uh, points that are made by the, uh, Randwick Local Planning Panel. And I think it's, um, really imperative that we all are briefed on that. And it's not going to hold things up very much, but we'll be far better informed and across all the details. So if we can have a briefing and then the matter come back to the September meeting, I think we're going to feel a lot more comfortable. So I hope other councillors support this proposal.
Thank you, councillor D'Souza is the seconda? Thank you, are there any further speakers? Uh, okay, there is a hand. I saw councillor Hay first and then councillor Olive. Councillor Hay.
I, I sent through a, uh, I was reading, uh, uh, point A through to Mr. Kelly.
Could, could, can I make a suggestion to you, it's, uh, up to you, that you foreshadow moving, um, the motion in an amended fashion? Um, we then deal with what, the motion, which is being moved in amended fashion by councillor Nielsen. Um, a- and then if you're successful then to move that?
I'll.
Yep, that's fine. The only bit, the only bit of guide, sorry, sorry, one, one clarification though. If ca- if carried, if carried by councillor Nielsen D'Souza, you won't actually have the ability to move your amendment.
Yes, my amendment is regarding, um,
Okay.
sixty High Street. Uh, the matter of, i- if this gets deferred to a planning meeting, uh, then we'll ha- then it'll come back, my understanding is it'll come back to council, then to go to public exhibition. So I can add the amendment later if, if need be.
Thank you, um. Um, can I add the, so, sorry, um, what I might do, just, just to avoid, because we've got lo- lots of procedural experts around the table. What I will do is I will throw to the general manager. Um, I'll throw to the general manager to give some clarity around, um, the discussion there so that everyone has the ability, if they so choose, to move what it is that they would like, Mr. General Manager.
My understanding is that this particular motion from councillor Nielsen D'Souza is successful, it'll be deferred to the next council briefing session in two weeks' time, then come back to the council meeting in September. Uh, if that motion is successful, then any foreshadowed motions are off the table. If this motion is not successful, then your foreshadowed amendment would be the first thing we do with after that.
There's no harm adding it now, and then I'll, I will, I will move my amendment and I will also foreshadow the motion.
Thank you, could you please outline what it is you're moving councillor Hay? I will then call for a seconda.
If I could ask Mr. Kelly to bring up the email. Essentially, I have requested that special consideration be given, uh, to, uh, submissions that, uh, that are made regarding sixty High Street. And in, specifically in relation to its, uh, to its, uh, uh, status being contributory, be reviewed following a community consultation.
Uh, seconded by councillor Hamilton. Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Nielsen is the mover of the motion, do you accept the amendment?
I'd prefer that we have the briefing, and I'm sure that this will be one of the matters that will come back for us to decide or to be considering following our briefing.
Okay, just so I can confirm, I take it that you don't accept the amendment? Okay, thank you. Councillor Hay is the mover of the amendment? Have you spoken to it?
Uh, I, I've spoken briefly to it. We had, um, we, we had a speaker in motion earlier tonight. He does make a compelling case. Um, I, I'm very interested in hearing what the community have to say regarding whether or not this should be considered a contributory or not. Uh, and we do want to, um, uh, look, just pay extra special consideration to all the submissions. Uh, we're not, at this stage, um, we're, we're not binding council either way, we're just, uh, pushing for, uh, a very thorough review of, of our relation to sixty High Street.
I fully understand what you're saying and I support it, but I just think it's better to leave it open at this stage.
Um, thank you. Are there any further speakers on the amendment? Okay, there is a question from councillor Olive. I'm.
To accept that as an amendment.
Oh, okay, it's been accepted by councillor, um, Nielsen and incorporated into the motion moved? Yep, thank you, sorry.
And to be clear, I also foreshadow moving it as per the business paper with point A.
Okay, okay, thank you. Are there, now we return to debate on the motion as moved. Councillor Nielsen has accepted the proposed amendment from councillor Hay. So there is a point A, that council defer consideration of the matter for a briefing to address matters raised. And a point B, that council considers thoroughly any submissions regarding sixty High Street and its status of being a contributory item, uh, be reviewed following the community consultation. Are there any further speakers on the motion moved, Nielsen D'Souza? Councillor Olive, your question.
Um, just about the, uh, the Randwick Junction planning proposal, uh, generally. Uh, what's to stop, um, wha- uh, what's happening in the Kingsford to Kensington area, uh, where you are having student builds instead of, you know, sort of, um, a diverse range of accommodation, uh, from happening with the Randwick Junction proposal to the relevant officer?
Through to the director of city planning.
Um, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the type of development would be permissible within the zone. Um, so, uh, we'd have to, uh, assess each application on, on its merits, of course. Um, the nature of the developments at Kensington, um, may be slightly more conducive to, um, that form of development, um, given where it's located in proximity to the, to the university. Um, but also in terms of the, the scale provided for in that, those particular developments to, to, uh, to achieve a certain yield, um, to make the development more feasible. Whereas in, and you'll see within the Randwick Junction Town Centre, the, the, the heights and FSRs are less than, uh, what is provided for within Kensington and Kingsford.
Uh, thank you councillor Veitch.
Um, I just have a follow-up question to councillor Olive's question. Um, are there likely to be provisions included in the DCP regarding, uh, bedroom and so forth, that would perhaps inform the types of developments that we receive?
Through to the director of, um, city planning.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There would be apartment sizes and room sizes, um, in accordance with the apartment design guidelines, where they would apply to private dwellings. Um, in terms of co-living, that is a separate type of development, um, and operates on a different type of, um, dwelling model.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Get some interesting gesticulation across the chamber. There being no further speakers councillor Nielsen to.
Sorry, yeah, just a minor corrections, um, that it should be Randwick Local Planning Panel, sorry, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. Uh, there being no further speakers, I take it that councillor Nielsen closes the debate. Uh, it being a planning matter, uh, we will go straight to a division. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Hamilton, Pendlefeeny, uh, Nielsen, Veitch. No, I do. Okay, I'm gonna recall the division, okay. All those in favour of the motion moved Nielsen D'Souza, which contains two points, point A and point B, that is the motion which is in front of us, it has an A and a point B, which is right there. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you councillor Pendle, councillor Pendlefeeny, councillor Nielsen, councillor Veitch, councillor Chapel, councillor Olive, councillor Wilson, councillor Sid, and councillor D'Souza and the mayor, I declare it carried. All those against? Councillor Hamilton, Hay, Rosenfeld, McCafferty and Burst, I declare it carried, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, move a procedural motion because we've got a lot to go on the business paper. It's getting late, we restrict speeches to two minutes, please.
Okay, do you have a second of the procedural motion? Second of councillor Sid. Uh, all those in favour of the procedural motion, all those against? I actually, well, look, the nose were louder, um. Okay, there's been a call for a division, is there a second person to call for a division? Okay, okay, councillor Veitch has seconded the call for a division, all those. She did. I, I, I can't help the fact, coun- only councillor Veitch can speak for herself, thank you. Okay, is there a seconda for the call for a division? Okay, councillor Olive called the seconded. Ca- coun- so, that, that is true. We're going to a division, all those in favour of the procedural motion to limit speaking times, please raise your hand. Okay, we have councillor Hay, Rosenfeld, McCafferty, Wilson, Sid, all those against. Councillor Hamilton, Pendlefeeny, Nielsen, Veitch, Chapel, Olive, D'Souza and the mayor. Uh, I declare the procedural motion lost, okay. We now move to, uh, CS thirty-two slash twenty-three. Thank you to those in the, um, public gallery, that's the, the end of the planning matters. Uh, we now move to CS thirty-two slash twenty-three draft Randwick City Council Place Based Strategy, moved by councillor Chapel. Councillor Chapel, could you please outline what it is that you are moving? Uh, I will then call for a seconda.
As per the business paper.
Okay, thank you. Is there a seconded? Seconded by councillor Hamilton. Councillor Chapel is the mover.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be very brief. I think this is a very fantastic piece of work, with the exception of a map that I've raised with Mr. Clark. Um, I think this is a really ambitious proposal. Um, what I would say though is we've got a target, this is a, a strategy going out to twenty thirty-eight. And we've got a target in there of two regional level playgrounds by that time. And I've got to say, with increasing density even just around the East Gardens area, what's gonna happen? Kingsford, Kensington, Maruba in that time, I think we're gonna, in a few years, come back and probably revise that figure up and find a few more destination playgrounds in our area. Um, I also note the report calls for more play trails, nature trails, accessibility. Um, play trails will currently be done where there are district or regional playgrounds or upgrades to that status. Um, and I'd also love us to be considering that for the local playgrounds as well. But overall, I think this is really fantastic, um, and it's gonna be really exciting.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Sid? Sorry, councillor Hamilton is the seconda, then I'll go to councillor Sid. Councillor Hamilton is the seconda.
I can go with councillor Chapel, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Sid.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, uh, also like to thank council staff for this report because it highlights, um, as you go through it, the largest number of low to lowest are obviously in the South Ward. So as I agree with councillor Chapel, if we could do this a lot faster, I'd very much appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, take it that you don't wish to close the debate? Okay, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. We now move to CS thirty-three slash twenty-three Maruba Road Traffic Corridor Study, moved by ca- councillor Rosenfeld. Councillor Rosenfeld, could you please outline what it is that you are moving? I will then call for a seconda.
Okay, um, firstly, I'd, I'd like to say how happy I am that it's finally, uh, what I'm moving, okay.
Can, can I just confirm that you're moving it in amended fashion?
Moving it in amended fashion, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, could you please bring up the amendment?
No, no, because you voted against it. You lost, and now I'm using five minutes and all of it. No, I'm not gonna take five, actually. Okay.
Mr. Kelly, could you please bring up the amendment?
Uh, yeah, the amendment I sent through, Mr. Kelly. Because you came back and acknowledged it.
Um, Miss councillor Rosenfeld, you can read it out while he, um.
Okay, so add, um, add B, priority is to be given to the proposed treatment at Cooper Street slash Mons Avenue before the proposed treatments at the other eight intersections are acted upon. Then, the current B becomes C. The current B becomes C. And then we're gonna add D. Then we add D, that an additional resourcing strategy is developed to progress the short-term actions identified in the Bitios Report. That's it, that becomes D, David. That becomes D. And then add A, that the Maruba Road cycleway be deleted.
Thank you. Do we have a seconda? Councillor Sid asked a seconda. Councillor Sid is the seconda, thank you. Um, are, are there any further speakers? Okay, there's, okay, councillor Sid is the seconda, then I'll go to councillor Chapel. Were there any further speakers that I can add before we go there? Okay, no, councillor Sid is the seconda.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um. I commend the actual amendments. Um, as we know, that this was last term of council. The Mons Avenue, uh, Cooper Street was a bane of contention that actually got tried to do twice. All the residents and councillors asked for traffic lights, and it's sensational that finally they've been put in. Um, with the expensive, they need to, those no- lights need to go in almost immediately, so do all the other traffic lights at Royal Street. We all know that Maruba Road is very hard to, to drive through. Um, and point D is needed, we do need to scrap the bike track because as we know, they're probably between five to ten million dollars. Um, so that money could be quickly allocated to the traffic singles and we could do this as fast as possible and keep our residents safe.
Thank you councillor Chapel.
Um, sorry, just a question, but, um, the motion talks about, uh, going out for consultation, then coming back and then working out the plan for delivering things. Uh, are we kind of preempting that by saying we're gonna do, which one we're gonna do first? Like, is it possible that some of those other considerations may need to be done to make the signalised intersection work, or?
Um, through to the relevant officer. Director of City Services.
Through yourself, Mr. Mayor, uh, the way the motion reads, uh, currently on the screen is that consultation will go out to, uh, the community for the nine treatments. However, uh, direction is to provide, uh, Cooper and Mons as a priority. Um, in, in, but before, sorry, the, the other eight.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Chapel with a follow-up question?
No, can I just speak to the motion now?
You may, and then just so I can confirm, I've got Chapel, Olive, okay, and then Veitch.
Um, I just think it's gonna be no surprise that I oppose point E. I ride from Maruba to the CBD every day, um, and Maruba Road is just a death trap. Um, Anzac Parade is a death trap as well, there is no actual safe way to get from Beachside at Maruba. To get from Beachside at Maruba, um, through to the cycle ways that start in Kensington at the moment, there's just no actual legitimate connection. Um, the connections that are most preferred by cyclists are the ones that you can see, they're the ones down the main road, all these people who don't want the Bundock Cycle Way. They're saying build one on Maruba Road instead, and we're saying, no, get stuffed, um, which I think is just deeply disappointing. Um, I do understand that we do need to make these priorities, I do understand that putting a cycle way there would be a really big decision, but this wasn't even making that decision. This was going out to the community and asking what they say, and if you look at the consultation we've done on this study so far, they're saying they want cycle ways. They're saying they want a safe option through this place, um, and I think it's just deeply disappointing that we're. Not gonna be, you know, progressing that in any way. Um, I would also say that what this means as well is, that cycle way, I mean, I would be using that to get into the city. But the main people who could use that are all the people up at East Gardens who wanna get down to the beach. We don't want more parking down there because there's never gonna be enough parking, it's too far to reasonably walk. But they could so easily ride down if there was a decent path, it could just go straight down the road.
Sorry, councillor Sedd, councillor Chapel will be heard in silence, thank you, councillor Chapel, please continue, councillor Sedd.
Uh, responding to councillor Sedd's comments, I mean, I ride a lot, I use the Strava heat maps, people aren't using that as a thoroughfare because they, like. You need to be in the area for quite a long time, have people tell you, et cetera, et cetera, a cycle way down a main road like that does not have that problem. It does not need word of mouth, it doesn't need you to be tapped into a community, it's just available, it's accessible, it removes barriers. Means kids can get down there, and I just, I'm really disappointed.
Thank you, uh, councillor, I, I saw a hand up from councillor Olive, then I'll go to councillor Veach.
Um, I, I think councillor Sedd said that, um, uh, if we scrap the cycle way, then we'll have millions of dollars to, um. To carry out these inter- intersections, I think, you know, sort of that, uh, council haven't, haven't been, uh. Given the money from Transport New South Wales to actually do this at all, and the way cycle ways are occurring. It will be very much in the future before that happens, so the likely scenario that we, that money can be used to try and. Um, improve the intersections is not a, a scenario that we're going to be dealing with. I'm totally against, uh, you know, point E because I think that, uh, not only, you know, sort of. Does it send the wrong messages about, you know, sort of what, uh, council's about in terms of, um, in terms of, um. Trying to have active transport as part of their strategy, you know, sort of, which has health benefits, it has environmental benefits. And it has leisure benefits, uh, for, um, for the community, it, it disenfranchises. It disenfranchises a large, a large proportion of our community, uh, who are, um, uh. Either cyclists or young people, young people who would find it dangerous if you didn't have, you know, sort of a dedicated cycle way. To be cycling, you know, sort of amongst cars, so therefore they are unable to do, so you're disenfranchising. A, a whole range of, uh, residents in our community, and, uh, and I, I don't think that that's fair and equitable. And so I'm totally against, uh, point D.
Thank you, uh, councillor Veach, then councillor Nielsen.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to echo the comments made by my colleagues, and I guess just appeal to, uh, councillor Rosenfeld and Sedd. To consider removing point E because these, you know, council unanimously supported, uh. The idea and are now actively working on the Anzac Parade Corridor Cycle Way. Um, and this would just complement that cycle way, and allow people to move around the sort of central and southern parts of our LGA. Safely, um, we know that there have been now over twelve, um, like food delivery cyclists in Australia killed in the, in recent years. That area is full of, uh, food delivery cyclists, as well as people such as councillor Chapel who commute to work. Um, there's lots of schools in the area, and we should really be encouraging, uh, kids to be able to ride safely to school. Um, and in any case, these cycle ways, they are expensive, but we apply for funding for them. Um, and so it wouldn't be council who's applying for this, paying for this themselves, we'd be applying through these particular funding pools. And I would note that, um, it's probably easier to get funding to install the signalised traffic lights. Uh, part and parcel of a cycle way funding programme, which is what has happened in Bundock and Sturt. Um, when you're applying for the, uh, funding for the signalised traffic lights, you are up against councils all across Sydney, all across New South Wales. Um, and it could be years if, before they ever get built, so. I would, uh, appeal to the councillors to, to remove point E because council won't pay for it in any case, they're too expensive, we're applying for funding. And it would be such a game changer for, for people in the community, uh, to have that put in, so, um. Happy to support all the other points, uh, thank you.
Thank you, uh, councillor Nielsen.
Well, I would like to, um, foreshadow that I would like to move the, uh, motion, but in an amended form, so exactly the same, A, B, C and D. But to delete point E, and I think that, um. The comments that people have been making about the Maruba Road Cycle Way and so on, whatever their feelings are, I personally don't want to see it deleted. But if it goes out on consultation, we get the support from the community, we've got a project within the business paper. That does make sort of a certain amount of sense, it's gonna make it a lot easier for the community to be responding to the consultations. And then when they come back, then we can make our decision as to whether or not we support. The concept of the Maruba Road Cycle Way, uh, be deleted, so I'm foreshadowing A, B, C and D, happy to move that, I hope I get a seconder.
Thank you, are there any further speakers on the motion as moved by Rosenfeld Sedd? There being no further speakers on the debate, councillor Rosenfeld, do you wish to close the debate, noting that councillor, uh. Nielsen has foreshadowed a separate motion in the event that this fails.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to close it because I haven't really spoken on it, I just put the amendments, um, firstly, as I was trying to say earlier, really happy that it's finally. Come, come, brought to council because the consultation was December twenty twenty-one. Uh, and reiterating what councillor Sedd said, Cooper Street and Mons Avenue, I get constant, I'm sure you do Mister Mayor, Euro Central Order. Constant, uh, people and possibly Kim Chapel, uh, put con- emails saying, yeah, it's, it's a dangerous intersection, so, no. It's, it's, I'm very happy that, uh, it's, it'll be prioritised, but the other eight, uh, the other sev- uh, the other seven, um. Um, uh, treatments are, are definitely, uh, worthy as well.
Thank you, there being no further speakers, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against? I, okay, there's been a call for a division from two councillors, uh, we will now, uh, put it, all those in favour of the motion as moved, Rosenfeld Sedd. Please raise your hand, uh, councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor McCafferty. Councillor Wilson, councillor Sedd, councillor Burst, councillor de Souza and the mayor, all those against. Uh, councillor Pendlefini, councillor Nielsen, councillor Veach, councillor Chapel, councillor Olive, I declare the motion carried. Motion being carried, uh, there's no ability to move the foreshadowed motion, uh, we now move to the next item of business, which is. C C seventeen slash twenty-three, uh, update on the Knox Night Sculpture Walk funds. Which I believe were challenged by councillor Sedd.
Yes, Mister Mayor, look, I realise it was only a read and, read and, read and noted, but. I did wanna just ask a few questions and work something out, that the actual original motion that myself and councillor, councillor Veach put forward, I seconded. Was that it was meant to be, the money for the Knox was meant to be for, um, carried over to the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. It was gonna be for future art projects, which I thought was great, but it was gonna come back to us about all the ideas they had. And the advisory committee, the Arts and Cultural Committee, were gonna bring back in the August meeting, ideas that they had, and we talked about it at a briefing. It seems that it's already been predetermined what was gonna happen with the money, and the only reason why it didn't go towards, um. The Aboriginal Cultural Programme is because no one was able to do it. Does this mean it was predetermined, the hundred ninety thousand dollars was already pre-spent, if someone did say yes, does that mean it was never gonna come back? For us to decide on, it was gonna be predetermined and actually happening, so it's just, I'm just confused about.
Th- through to the Director of Community and Culture.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, the report was always gonna come back to council.
Thank you.
And as, as a, so as a briefing, Mister Mayor, so was it coming back to council as a briefing with only the one? Uh, recommendation, or come back to council and say, look, we can't find this? Um, do councillors wanna have a say in it, does it, only the arts and culture have a say in it? Who predetermines a hundred ninety thousand, which is less now, I suppose, only a hundred fifty thousand, um. So, will we be able to, as councillors, have a briefing on what we do with exactly a hundred fifty thousand dollars? Or is it all predetermined by the Arts and Cultural Council?
Thank you, through to the Director of Community and Culture.
A scope was going to be written that would have been briefed back to councillors, which would have given the opportunity for, um, consultation with councillors.
Um, thank you, I have a question through to the Director of Community and Culture. Uh, following on from the earlier resolution from this evening, um. Could you please outline what it is your understanding of council's resolution to allocate, uh, the, the overall, uh, quantum of funds? Uh, which council has resolved to allocate in twenty-four, twenty-five to this, uh, Knox substitute event?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, it will be one hundred ninety thousand dollars.
Thank you, um, are there any further questions? Okay, thank you, so to confirm you're moving the recommendation on the business paper?
So, 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 sorry, so it remains at a hundred ninety thousand, wasn't the Culture of Country coming in?
To the Director of Community and Culture, to the Director of Community and Culture.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, an allocation of around, um, thirty thousand dollars will be used in this financial year. And then an allocation of one hundred ninety thousand dollars will be put into the twenty-four, twenty-five budget for this event.
Thank you very much, um, can I just confirm that you're removing the resolution on the business paper, councillor Sedd? Councillor Sedd, uh, councillor Hamilton is the seconder, you don't wish to speak, councillor Veach.
Ah, thank you, look, I'm very happy to support this, and just, uh, if, uh. Councillors will indulge me as, uh, being the Chair of the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee, we did, uh, have a good discussion. And I think councillor Wilson might have been there, uh, councillor Luxford was there, councillor Hay. I believe was at that meeting, uh, there was quite a few different people, obviously councillor Pendlefini, uh, at the meeting, as well as, uh, Sharon Smith. Um, and Auntie Lola, and so this was, um, a discussion following on from the fact that Knox was no longer going to proceed. And we had a council resolution to send, you know, to, to defer this, uh, refer it to the Arts and Cultural Committee for a discussion as to how to use that money. Um, quite a number of different ideas were canvassed, uh, but following actually a suggestion from Auntie Lola and supported by Sharon Smith. Uh, it was suggested that, uh, it become a, a sort of First Nations event of some kind, but perhaps with a contemporary focus. Um, and that was unanimously supported by, uh, everyone on the committee. Um, I, I understand now that it's been quite, uh, challenging, given the other events on, to actually. Uh, find, uh, a First Nations curator who's available, um, in the short term. To, um. To actually provide us with a report, um, but yeah, it will, no doubt, we will get something in due course and it will come back to, to council. I think it'll be a very, very exciting, uh, event, and it was certainly supported by everyone on the committee of all political persuasions.
Thank you, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Sedd, do you wish to close the debate? Thank you, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you. Okay, we now move to C C eighteen slash twenty-three, Alfredo Randwick Programme, which moved by councillor Hay. Uh, uh, councillor Hay, could you please outline what it is that you are moving, uh, and then, uh, I will call for a seconder.
Uh, I sent a, a motion to Mister Kelly. Essentially, uh, while it's coming from the screen, uh, I absolutely love this Alfredo Randwick, uh, dining programme. We all love seeing, uh, restaurants out on the street, uh, it really contributes to a sense of community, to borrow a phrase. The, uh. And basically, what we need to do, this is a great way to support local businesses, uh, the only issue I have is that. While we are, um, the current, uh, plan is limited to, uh, just ten businesses for cost reasons. Uh, what we can do is we can extend it to, uh, more businesses beyond ten, uh, so long as it's, uh, doesn't cost extra to council. So, um, I'd like to, uh, ask everyone to allow the possibility of more sites if it doesn't cost council.
Uh, okay, thank you, can I just confirm, uh, that you're moving the motion in amended fashion? Uh, with an A, B and C, okay, a call for a seconder? A seconder from councillor Chapel, okay, thank you, um. Uh, are there any further speakers? Okay, I saw a hand up from councillor Rosenfeld, then I'll go to councillor Nielsen. Councillor Rosenfeld, sorry, councillor Chapel is the seconder, councillor Chapel is the seconder, no, councillor Rosenfeld?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, I've, I've, actually, and, um, Katie knows this, I've had some communication with the North Caf- Cafe because they reached out. When McKean Plaza trial was on, they felt like, uh, they've dealt a little bit, then we put a play, uh, like that little play area in. Unfortunately, we had some, uh, parkland, that's it, thanks for the word, we had some antisocial behaviour, so couldn't keep it. And, um, they're, they're quite, they're excited about this, um, this trial coming up, the Alfredo. Um, I had a chat with them down, uh, uh, on Sunday at the beach when I rented a tide as well, and, um. Um, yeah, they're quite, no, I definitely have a sur-, and, um, yeah, so, um, yeah, North Cafe, um. Uh, North, uh, they're quite, North End are quite happy about it.
Thank you, uh, councillor, oh, councillor Nielsen.
I'd like to add, um, a further point, and, um. That is that, um. We ensure that the proposed angle parking on St Mark's Road is completed before the concrete barriers are installed. To ensure the Spagataria trial does not unreasonably impact on the local amenity.
Okay, thank you.
Happy to have that added?
Duke of Gloucester, isn't there already angle parking? No, I thought there was, okay.
Point is, that's always fully taken, where, and the point is, what I'm proposing, um, and thank you for asking the question, councillor Hay. Is, um, a little bit further along St Mark's Road, opposite, you know, where there's the Osgood substation huge thing. And overlooking Bligh Place, so we're actually not in front of anybody's house, so the rear to curb parking days could be. Line marking could be installed there, in which case that will provide extra parking, and the reason that I'm putting this forward is that. There have been complaints from members of the Randwick precinct over quite a period of time about the problem of parking, um. In St Mark's Road for people who are wanting to access the shops and businesses on St, um, on Frenchman's Road and Clubelli Road. So, the idea of this would be providing at this opportunity, because we're losing spots, and there most likely will be a loss of two parking spaces, not just one. Uh, outside the Spagataria, so by installing the line marking, and it's not an expensive thing, I mean, you and I in the old days, we'd get out there with our paintbrush, but. Nothing safety doesn't allow us anymore, probably thankfully, um. But I don't think it's a big ask, and certainly the residents would feel a lot happier with that, and the other thing, while we're talking, I might as well point out to you. Everybody on page one eighty-three, the photo, the photograph supposedly of the Spagataria, ain't the Spagataria, it's the Bistro. Moncur that was, uh, the Pizza Moncur, sorry, that was there previously. Um, but if you're happy to incorporate that extra point, um, councillor Hay, I'd be very grateful, and I know the residents of St Mark's Road would be too.
I'm, I'm happy in principle, can I see what, uh, where? Yes, yeah, uh, yes, I'm happy to accept that, um, the, it, it's a good opportunity to incre- improve a lot of parking in an area that. Doesn't have a lot of parking, so happy to accept.
Okay, thank you, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I will now, uh, put it, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you. Uh, C C nineteen slash twenty-three, Community Partnerships Programme, which was challenged by. Councillor Hamilton. C C nineteen, uh, Community Partnerships Programme, uh, the recommendation, uh, has an A, B and C. And it has a C point I or C, or C I, uh, uh, two or C I I, um, we need to elect to do one or the other.
Okay, so, um. Considering that we need to elect to do one or the other, I mean, I'm, I'm not, um, proposing to change anything. I'm not wanting to, um, make any amendments whatsoever, so I guess we just need to leave it up to the vote. Okay, we'll just do C I.
A seconder? Okay, uh, councillor Chapel is the seconder. Okay, uh, councillor Chapel is the seconder. Uh, councillor Chapel, do you wish to speak to it? Councillor McCafferty? Your question?
Um, my question, and I'm getting, first of all, I will note that, I mean, this funding goes to, uh, Bondi Beach Cottage, um, Waze Youth and Family, and other, uh, centres that are not in our, um, our district. Um, why isn't the deli, which is in our L G A, why isn't the deli on the list?
Uh, through to the Director of Community and Culture.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. The deli did not apply for, um, funding in this round.
Thank you, councillor.
Did anyone approach the deli to tell them that they hadn't applied and that they should?
Uh, through to the Director of Community and Culture.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Recently, council entered into an M O U, which is an ongoing partnership with the deli, um, but they are aware of this program.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Sid.
Following along that question, does Bayside Women's Short River approach us? Seeing they're right on our border and three of these are from Bondi?
Through to the Director of Community and Culture.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Not that I am aware of.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Olive?
Sorry, I, I just have a question that, um, the amount that's proposed to be spent, um, spent is less than the amount that was allocated. Will that amount just roll over, um, to, so that's a considerable sum, I suppose?
Through to the relevant officer.
Yes, it will.
Anyway, uh, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Hamilton, I take it you don't wish to close debate? You, you, you're not, you're not, oh no, it's councillor Chapel, actually. That's all right, councillor Chapel. All right, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Okay, we now move to uh, C C twenty slash twenty-three, Matreville Carols, which were challenged by it was, it was challenged by councillor Burst, and then councillor D'Sousa, do you call out first? Councillor Burst is the mover?
I'd like to speak to it.
Thank you. I take it you're moving the recommendation on the business paper?
Yes, I'd like to move it as per the recommendation.
Thank you.
Um, I'm very proud to say that, um, having a vision back in October twenty-two, uh, bringing this, uh, as a, uh, uh, notice of motion to council. Um, it was time to bring carols back to, I'd appreciate if it could be heard in silence.
Councillors, all, all, all colleagues will be heard in silence. Thank you. Councillor Burst, please continue. Councillor Nielsen, councillor Burst will be heard in silence.
I'm proud that we're bringing ca- uh, Christmas back to the South Ward and Christmas carols back to Matreville. So, um, I'm, I'm proud of this, this motion and where it's going now, and, um, we need to look after South Ward, um, residents, and we need to bring some festivity and joy to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor D'Sousa is the second? Councillor D'Sousa.
Mister Mayor, Matreville has always had a sentimental place in my heart. It's where I started and where the, my fondest memories are. This event was something I started many years ago. We tried to emulate those wonderful chemists in Marubra, the Walsh Brothers. And we, we did a quite a good job. Of course, they always did it bigger and better than us, but we started, and then others took over, and now council is playing a major role. I just want to thank you, Mister Mayor and the team, for embracing this with two hands and giving Matreville back what councillor Burst has said, the joy of Christmas. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, councillor Susan. Councillor Sid.
Mister Mayor, I just want to ask the mover, if I haven't, I haven't put this to Mister Kelly yet, but I want to put it to the mover first. And I was speaking to the, um, the director, um, I don't think, they, they've based their ten thousand dollars and I, on three costs of nearly three or four years ago. And the director has given an extra five thousand dollars, so thank you very much. But also, at the same time, I don't think they realise the costs of, uh, toilets, security, et cetera, et cetera. So, we could put a point F that we just discussed waiving the fees for a little bit, uh, some of the, uh, add-ons that will eventually will come. Um, and I don't think the committee, because it's all new again, they haven't done this for three years. Um, they'll need help with security, with, uh, extra toilets, all that sort of stuff. So, if we can just put an F that we will look into waiving the fees and helping with some of the running of the event management, just a little bit of help, if that's possible.
Set in order? We, we just, so, so is it he, is it discuss the waving? I'm just curious.
If the event team can offer help and can counsel, uh, resolution that we can waive the fees of security and extra toilets, and, um, but I don't have figures, so I don't. As long as it's not more than five thousand dollars.
Okay, through to the general manager.
Mister Mayor? Okay, that's different. How was that different?
Up to and not exceeding, say, an extra five thousand dollars.
Uh, councillor Sid, could you please outline the funding source?
Mister Mayor, I'll ask the G M if he can find it out. Five thousand dollars is somewhere outside.
Just to be confirmed, you're comfortable being the subject of a further report? Because it's just under the code of meeting practice.
No, it's got to be. We're off to Christmas.
Okay, thank you. Um, do, as the mover of the motion, do you support it?
Uh, yes, I accept it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are there any further speakers? There, uh, you can, that, that there being no further speakers, uh, I take it you don't wish to close debate? Okay, that, sorry, yes. Uh, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Okay, uh, oh, let's go on. That was the one that wasn't challenged. Hold on. Okay, we now have C O thirty-nine slash twenty-three, Investment Report, challenged by councillor Olive. Councillor Olive, could you please outline what is you're moving?
Uh, I'm, I'm, I move the, uh, the, um, uh, recommendation as on the business papers, but I wanted to just speak to.
Uh, thank you. I'll, okay, seconded by councillor Hamilton. Councillor Olive?
Uh, it's just that I, I noted that, you know, sort of, um, our, uh, total, you know, sort of investment portfolio, the, the value is, um, uh, down to, you know, sort of, um, uh, a hundred and forty-five. Now, let, let me go back. Yeah. Yeah, down to a hundred and forty-five million, whereas, you know, sort of, before, it was in February, it was up to a hundred and sixty-two. And, um, if we, if we look at, you know, sort of the, the fixed term deposits, that eight and a half million have been, um, uh, have, uh, have, uh, been, um, redeemed here. But there's no further investments which have taken place, um, when, if we look at, uh, what is it, page, uh, two twenty-eight, we can see that the, um, our portfolio return is less than, just marginally less than, you know, sort of our benchmark, which is the on, uh, Osborne Bank Bill, um, index there. Um, if we'd have reinvested now, um, at the higher interest rates, then, you know, sort of, uh, um, then that may have, you know, sort of pushed up our, our returns, because, you know, so we have lagging returns, because, you know, so a lot of our investments were made quite a while ago when the interest rates were low. Um, I'm just wondering why we withdrew those amounts, um, uh, when those, those, um, uh, investments matured, why we withdrew them and didn't invest again? And also, given, I guess, you know, sort of the fact that we have, you know, sort of a, 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 a very low, um, uh, net operating surplus, um, and it's only one month, is that any cause for concern that, you know, sort of, we're, we're we're spending down our investments and we, and I know it's only one month, but we are not, we haven't got any additional surplus. I was just wondering, you know, sort of if, uh, you know, if there was an explanation for that. Thank you.
Um, thank you. The question through, uh, to the relevant officer. Thank you, Mister Wong.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, the investments that, uh, the council undertakes is based on operational requirements such as, such as capital. Um, in terms of the question whether there is any concern about the, uh, the amount of investment of a hundred and forty-five million, there is no rate, uh, there's no concern at all. Our budget, uh, for twenty-three, twenty-four ha- has an average balance of a hundred and twenty million based on, uh, capital requirements and operational requirements. Thank you.
Councillor Olive? Um, through to the general manager.
Thanks, Mister Mayor. Traditionally, local government, the biggest spending month is July, because it's the end of the financial year, that's when most of the contracts get done, the purchase orders get finalised. So, it'd be, it would be normal for us to spend most of the money in capital in that time. That's what, um, the chief financial officer was saying about our operating requirement to do that. Uh, and then they need to draw down money from council's reserves to pay for that, which is what the manager put aside for.
Thank you. Uh, there being no further speakers, I'll now put it, the recommendation as per the business paper. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Uh, C O forty slash twenty-three, uh, monthly financial report as at thirty-first of July, challenged by councillor Chapel.
Yep, just moving as per the business paper with a question for Mister Wong.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Hamilton. Ca- uh, councillor Chapel.
Thank you, um, and sorry, I, I know there is an attempt to explain this in the note, and I just wasn't sure I fully understood it. Um, through to the relevant officer, but I know who it is. Um, page two thirty-nine, um, the table there with the performance ratio summaries. Um, some of them are obviously trending in the not great direction. I would love to hear a brief comment on that. But mainly just that last point where, um, our year-to-date is forty-one point nine seven, and you've noted that that is because the rate notices hadn't gone out, and I'm just interested in, um, are we using accrual accounting at that stage, or is that, is that the answer?
Thank you. Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, rates and annual, annual charges, interest and extra charges, outstanding percentage, uh, is normally taken as an annual figure when you measure on a monthly basis. So, when you just send out rates, it's very hard to collect it, because it's a, it's a period of time when you collect. That's where there's an anomaly, if you measure it on a monthly basis. Generally, collections happen in August and every two months after that.
Okay, thank you.
Just while we're at it, would, would you maybe be able to briefly comment on just the, um, change between our budgeted and actuals on operating performance on source and unrestricted, please?
Through to the, uh, relevant officer.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. One, one's a, a annual figure in terms of ma- um, in terms of measurement. Um, so, one's measured o- over a period of twelve months, one's measured over one month. They, they, they reach all, uh, o- office of local government benchmarks.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or speeches? Okay, uh, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Just a reminder that all councillors will be heard in silence, and we won't be talking around the table. Thank you. Okay, um, okay, thank you. We now move to motions pursuant to notice for councillors. What I might suggest is that we take a brief, um, five-minute break, uh, and for those who are listening, we will return uh, at, uh, ten, ten P M. Thank you. Thank you. I now reopen the Randwick Council meeting at ten eleven P M. Thank you. Please be seated. Move to those, can I just confirm, public recordings back on? Thank you. To motions pursuant to notice, the first one on the agenda is N M fifty slash twenty three, notice of motion from Counselor Olive. Notification of residents of drop-off locations for empty medication blister pack recycling. Counselor Olive, is the move of the motion?
Thank you, yes. I'll take the motion as read. Just watching War on Waste with Craig Rook Castle, Craig Castle. He, in the first episode, did a section on medication packs and said that they can, they're a mix of plastic and aluminium and can be recycled, but they, no one actually does it and was advocating that the industry actually do it. I talked to council staff and they said, yes, there are three places that they, in the L G A that do it, three chemists. You can return to the, return your empty medicine packs to those stores. And, and I thought, well, that's a good idea, but no one knows about it as far as I know. And if War on Waste is saying there's no one doing it, then maybe the, our comms could publicise the fact that the people can actually return their medicine packs there. And so I've, this is why I've put this forward, this motion, and I commend it to council.
Thank you. Is there a second of the motion? I think I have to call for a second of first and then.
Okay.
I think I have to call for a second, second, actually Counselor D'Souza said he'd second it. Okay, Counselor D'Souza, do you wish to speak to it? Okay, thank you. Counselor Nielsen?
I'm totally supportive of the sentiments behind this motion, but what I'm concerned about is the fact that we're promoting a private business, which is not altogether the worst thing in terms of life. But I think it would be more appropriate, and this is a suggestion to you, Counselor Olive, and the seconder, that councillor officers prepare a report on appropriate methods to collect empty medication packs at Randwick Recycling Centre. And to then, and to publicise appropriate ways of recycling medication packs.
Okay, thank you. Just to confirm, is there a second to the amendment? Okay, I saw Counselor Hay as hand up. And can I just confirm, is the amendment in substitute of or in addition to the words moved by Counselor Olive?
Well, I suppose I would prefer that that be Counselor Olive's words and that would be our first option. So I guess I would prefer that Counselor Olive put that as the first option. And then the other options that he suggested might be what is necessary. But it would be preferable if we were able to work out something at the Randwick Recycling Centre ourselves.
Okay. Counselor Hay, do you still second? Okay, thank you. Is there a?
Prepare a report on appropriate methods to collect empty medication packs at Randwick Recycling Centre. So the council officers might come back with a report saying it's impossibility, we don't have to do it. Or it's more likely they will come back with a report with options for us that hopefully will include, and I would imagine it would, a way of us finding somewhere that would take the objects that we residents bring to the Randwick Recycling Centre.
Can I ask a question, Counselor Nielsen? Does that completely replace Counselor Olive's motion?
Thank you.
Well, I was hoping he might incorporate that into his motion.
Okay. Counselor Hay, do you then second it?
I'll second it if it completely replaces the motion because I'm happy with that one sentence.
Okay, okay, thank. So, so is that how you're moving it, Counselor Nielsen? No? Or, or yes? I don't know. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Are there any? I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure they did. Are there any further speakers on the amendment move? Nielsen Hay that reads that council officers prepare a report on appropriate methods to collect empty medication packs at the Randwick Recycling Centre, substituting all words. I have a hand up from Counselor McCafferty, then Counselor D'Souza on the amendment. Counselor McCafferty.
I was going to move a similar amendment to the effect that that the whole of, whole of the motion becomes investigate the collection of blister packs at the Randwick Recycling Centre and if possible advertise this service to the community, but I think more or less we get to the same place. Oh, yeah, and we can put that on the end and if possible advertise this service to the community.
On the amendment, I have Counselor D'Souza, then I'll go to Counselor Olive on the amendment. Okay, Counselor D'Souza.
Mr Mayor, I think what Counselor Nelson says has a lot of merit. If you look at the amendment, the motion, I was happy to second it, but this actually points like a compass. It advertises businesses. That isn't council's job to do that, or it shouldn't. It'll offend other pharmacists, et cetera. We should, the opportunity, the amendment offers a similar programme. It, it, the sentiment is recycling and the purpose is to do that in, in, in an organised way. But to specify businesses like Blooms at this and this and this puts council in a very, very I'm not comfortable with, with council pointing at businesses, recommending businesses. I'm happy with council recommending the service and that's why I would be more supportive of Counselor Nielsen and whoever the second was. I think Counselor, uh, Hay, but Counselor McCaffery actually spoke particularly well on it and she convinced me that this amendment is, has merit.
Thank you. Counselor Olive on the amendment, I'll then go to Counselor Chapel on the amendment.
I, I raised this with council staff and they said that they haven't got the facilities to act, to deal with, you know, sort of recycled medication packets and their priorities are for to, to deal with, you know, sort of recycled, you know, sort of other items which are what, they, they get greater volume, you know, sort of, so they would find this, you know, sort of an expensive exercise to do. So given that, you know, sort of, the, the point of, you know, sort of the war on waste was that industry should deal with its own, its own recycling issues, you know, sort of, and contribute to the circular economy. I thought that, you know, sort of, this was one way of doing it and, you know, sort of promoting whatever the source, you know, sort of recycling and, you know, sort of our, a contribution to the circular economy. So that's why I think that it should stand as is.
Counselor Chapel, then I'll go to Counselor Veitch.
Just very briefly to the amendment, I think it's a great idea to look into this, but I think in the meantime, there's an option that actually exists that we could tell people about right now. And I've got to say, the people, particularly elderly people who are using lots of medications, who we probably would have the best utility in reaching in terms of going and recycling this stuff. They're the people who are going to their pharmacy on a regular basis. It is disappointing that obviously only a few pharmacies in the area are doing this, but it seems silly to me not to promote the obvious good here and not require additional reports and stuff if we already know it's not possible. I would also note, I mean, welcome comrades into the anti-commercial struggle for council, I love it. But we have previously promoted Red Cycle at Coles and Woolworths, so.
All, all, all councils will be heard in silence. Counselor Chapel, please continue.
We previously promoted Red Cycle, we did that through all of our materials. We said, go take your soft plastics, take them to Woolies, take them to Coles. We did that in all of our council materials and nobody ever raised an issue about it. So I think it would be quite odd to now start drawing a distinction.
Thank you. Counselor Veitch.
I was just going to suggest an amendment to Counselor Olive and Nielsen that perhaps we could, that would perhaps be a halfway point, given that council, it seems we can't recycle them at the recycling centre. But there's a reluctance to promote a particular business, so maybe it could just be that we, council encourages residents to approach their local chemists to see if they can recycle them. And then that will also encourage other chemists to do it because we're not all going to go to a particular chemist, we'll go to the local one that we know. So I just wondered if that would be an acceptable amendment to all involved.
Counselor Nielsen?
To add to this amendment?
The council offices prepare a report on appropriate methods to collect empty packs at the recycling centre and if possible advertise the service to the community. And I'm suggesting that, that the, well, it's the suggestion from Counselor Veitch is that, that council promote the community approaching their pharmacists as to whether or not they recycle blister packs. Is that correct, Counselor Veitch?
Yeah, I was sort of suggesting it to Counselor Olive and I guess, and also Counselor Nielsen to see if you can combine that, you know, into the original motion.
Okay, okay.
I'm happy, I'm happy to incorporate that and it was, this motion came originally from Counselor Olive and I think it's, you know, a fantastic motion, totally agree with him. So I guess if he were to take away, delete. Yeah, but he, if he, if it was his, I suppose I shouldn't tell him what to do. But he, he were to, if Counselor Olive were to amend his original motion by deleting a couple of things, then I guess I would be happy to go back. Perhaps you can do a bit of work there, Counselor Olive. I'll leave it in your capable hands, otherwise I'm sticking with mine.
Okay, to, to assist the meeting, I think, I think what the suggestion from Counselor Veitch is, is that the proposed amendment, there's a point B, that that wording be incorporated and sub, sorry, that that wording substitute point D. And so the question is to the mover of the original motion, would you accept that?
I mean, I, I, I can see that, you know, if people go off to their pharmacist and they don't recycle them, they just throw it in the, the waste and, you know, sort of just go into landfill.
All right. It, it, it's, it's, it sounds like you don't accept the amendment.
Okay, no, I will, I will accept the amendment and sort of for the sake, because I see that it's not going to go anywhere otherwise. So, okay, I mean, I, I will accept.
Okay, so just to confirm that, that, I know it's a bit tricky. Counselor Nielsen will withdraw her amendment, is that correct? And that Counselor Olive will incorporate the language from point B to substitute point D in his motion. Okay, can we please go up? And, well, do you have any opposition in point A being incorporated in as well?
Throw the, throw the whole lot in.
Yeah, it all, it all gets incorporated in. Okay, so.
So, I mean, someone can do a report and see whether, you know, can recycle and.
Okay, hold on. There's a question, I believe, from Counselor Hay.
I, I'd like to ask a question through the matter of the relevant officer. What are the obstacles regarding recycling blister packs at Randwick Recycling Centre? Why doesn't it currently hap, currently happen or could it happen?
Thank you. Through to the Director of City Services.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. The scope of the, the items recycled in the recycling centre are matrivalary in conjunction with EPA guidelines and EPA collaboration. So we'd have to consider the, the request of, of the motion in consultation with the EPA.
A brief little question. Do we have an estimate of how much it would cost?
Through you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Can I, just to progress the meeting, to confirm, the mover of the original motion accepts the incorporation of those two points into the motion and the deletion of D. Is that correct? Thank you. Counselor Nielsen, do you still need to move the motion because he's accepted it? Are there any further speakers on the motion as amended? Okay, thank you. Perfect. There being no further speakers on the motion as amended. Counselor Olive, do you wish to close debate? Okay, thank you. There being no further speakers, then I'll put it. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Notice of motion from Counselor Rosenfeld, traffic safety issues at the corridor of Garden Street and Green Streets, Marubra. Could you please outline what is you're moving? I will then call for a second.
Okay, basically, I'll take it as read. This intersection is a very dangerous intersection. Green Street is basically a, a very thin street. It's already a one-way road from Cooper Street down to Garden Street. And what I'm proposing is the traffic committee, who have already looked at this in March and, and put in a couple of measures that aren't working. The measures that I've, I've put in the, in, in the, in the notice of motion in the background. Local businesses have told us that it's not working and they're, they're still seeing near misses because traffic coming from Garden Road into Green Street basically going in the same time as traffic coming out from Green Street. So what I'm asking the traffic committee to do is to relook at this and look at a couple of options. One is to make Green Street a one-way street running westbound from Garden Road to Anzac Parade. And the other is to cut the curb on the southwestern corner of Greenwich Garden Street, which is actually suggested by one of the businesses just there. So, yep, that's, it's safety. I don't want to see any fatalities. I don't want it to be too late. This is important for the community.
Thank you. Before I go to the second, Counselor Olive, could you please turn off your microphone? Thank you. Counselor Burst is a second. Thank you. Counselor Hay.
As a young sixteen or seventeen-year-old, I was taking my driver's licence test, leaving the R T A in Green Street, turning right. And there was such poor visibility, I actually failed my driving test because of the terribleness of this intersection, so. It was over ten years ago, so I can, I get revenge for what happened twenty years ago. Thank you very much. I implore everyone to improve the safe.
Are there any further speakers? Okay, yes, it's, okay, I, I actually saw Counselor Veitch first. I saw Counselor Veitch first, then I'll go to Counselor Chapel. Okay, Counselor Chapel.
I mean, I don't in principle have any opposition to this. I guess I would like if traffic committee is going to look at it, that traffic committee looks at it holistically rather than kind of spitballing specific ideas. Just because, you know, it, it's my experience in this area that people drive like maniacs and probably a speed reduction and a whole bunch of traffic calming stuff is necessary if we're going to actually be serious about improving safety. Because there are like a fair bunch of pedestrians in this space. So I don't oppose it, but I just would like it confirmed, it says involve the following, but I would like that to be a non-exhaustive list of things that are considered, which I know is usually how this proceeds.
Thank you. Counselor Veitch.
Yeah. I know that there's been a lot of issues around that area with lots of the streets, particularly on the western side of Anzac. Between Anzac and Bunarong have been sort of mucked around with over the years with parts of them being one-way. With parts of them being one-way and this and that. And what's resulted, uh, for some, as a result of some of those is, um, and this is different. But just kind of flagging issues is that as a result of things that happened a very long time ago. With, I, I, I believe I have heard from local residents that this was, as a result of councillors putting up motions. That essentially in our, in West Ward, it's, we've got like everyone, there's an east-west route going up Snake. And it's just been a disaster, there were lots of, uh, accidents and then we got traffic cushions put in. And then they hate the traffic cushions and now we're putting in roundabouts. And that's because there's just no other sort of th- through east-west route that people can go both sides. And so I just, I just feel concerned about blocking off another one one-way. I mean, if the traffic committee and the, the experts in that committee recommend it, that's one thing. But I agree with Counselor Chapel, I'd support the motion, but maybe just removing those sort of dot points A and B. And it's not precluding them, but more perhaps just consider them. Because I just know down the track that these kind of things can sometimes cause further issues for other residents down the track. That you can't necessarily, uh, anticipate.
Thank you, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, Counselor Rosenfeld, do you wish to close the debate? Okay, we'll now put it, all those in favour?
Yay, well done.
All those against? I declare it carried, thank you. Uh, we now move to NM fifty-two slash twenty-three, notice of motion from Counselor Veach, Local Government, New South Wales. Annual conference motion, uh, I take it that you're moving on the business paper? Seconded, Counselor Nielsen, Counselor Veach, please move your motion.
Uh, uh, thank you, councillors and, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, look, I, I hope this is something you can support, we've obviously got the, uh, conference, uh, coming up later in the year. Um, I had, uh, following the recent state election, I had a, a Greens member actually, who's got quite a profound disability. Uh, who's just been a very, very strong advocate for, for disabilities, Jane, Jane Scott. Um, she actually powered quite a long way on her sort of, uh, uh, powered wheelchair, uh, to come and hand out how to vote. And she's just been constantly advocating, what can we do, people with disabilities are like twenty percent of the population. Um, and, you know, it's just, there were just so many barriers to people, uh, getting around, moving around. There would be so many things that we can do just to make life a whole lot easier. Um, and one of the big impediments is that many councils, including our own, just do not have the funds to implement all the actions. And so that are in our disability inclusion acts and plans. And so these could be things like curb ramps that are needed, uh, at Maruba Junction. Or it could be, uh, sort of, uh, putting in digital, uh, inclusion on our, on our website. And other sort of comms channels or customer service channels. So I hope you'll support this motion, uh, to go to conference, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Nielsen is the second. Thank you, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you. Uh, NM fifty-three slash twenty-three, uh, uh, sorry. Moved Counselor Veach, Local Government, New South Wales, twenty-twenty-three annual conference motion, mandating new construction codes for accessibility. Counselor Veach is the mover of the motion, moved Counselor Veach, seconded Counselor Nielsen.
Uh, thank you, um, again, this is another motion for the local government conference. Um, obviously, our construction codes do mandate certain provisions for accessibility, but they're not great. Um, there was a recent upgrade to the national construction codes, um, which had, I think, um. Three levels of, uh, improvements for accessibility. And most states have, uh, adopted the, the lowest level of improvements, which is called the silver level. Um, but unfortunately, New South Wales has not done that. Um, and it's just, um, minimum required levels that, you know, uh, improve, you know, access. And it's to do with width and, and a whole bunch of different things within homes. It doesn't just help people with a current disability, if you have an accident or you're injured as you get older. Uh, I'm in a very sad situation now, our house is not accessible, my mother can no longer come to our house, because she just cannot get in there. So as we age, as our relatives and loved ones age, uh, it just means that it's so much easier to put it in ahead of time. When, when new homes are being built, than try to retrospectively change things, um. And we've all had a, you know, a child who's, you know, maybe broken afford, you know, we've all, we've all encountered an issue where. Suddenly it's a bit easy, more difficult to get around, or, or, or that's the case for one of our loved ones. Apparently it only adds one to two percent to the cost of a new build, to make these minor adjustments. So it would be really, uh, mean a lot to, um, residents with a disability for, for council to be speaking up on their behalf. And calling for these, uh, minor, uh, changes, uh, and for LG New South Wales as the, as the advocacy body to do so. So I hope you can support this, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nielsen is the second. Thank you, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Uh, NM fifty-four slash twenty-three, notice of motion from Counselor Veach to go to the local government conference. Uh, okay, uh, encouraging local government super funds to, to support ethical investments. Uh, moved Counselor Veach, seconded Counselor Nielsen, Counselor Veach.
Uh, thank you very much, um, again, another one for, for conference. Um, there was a Four Corners, uh, report earlier this year, uh, to do with, um, an offset scheme in Papua New Guinea. Um, this offset scheme turned out to be a complete, uh, sham. Where members of a traditional community had been, uh, you know, told that they would get paid all this money. And that their sort of local forest would be protected and that, you know, they would get payments as to, uh, related to sort of, uh, carbon offsets. That people would purchase. Uh, this was, um, forgotten the name off the top of my head. But many institutions, including, uh, local government, New South Wales, were purchasing carbon credits through this entity. Which turned out to be a complete sham and in fact, this company was in fact logging the forest that they said that they would be, um. Uh, protecting, so it was the worst form of greenwashing possible. Uh, and the community saw literally no benefit whatsoever. Um, when we started to look into that, it became apparent that even though that was a very, very bad problem. The real issue was actually the fact that, um, local government, uh, super funds across the sta- the nation in fact. Uh, highly exposed to fossil fuels, they invest in tobacco, they invest in gambling, uh, even, uh, weapons manufacturers. Um, and, you know, most, uh, you know, and, and most, uh, staff actually have their super. Um, in local, local government staff have their super in local government super funds. So this is really just calling on active super and vision super, who are, who are likely, who are, you know, in an MOU to merge. To actually, uh, ask them to consider divesting. Um, if you have any, uh, super invested in ethical funds, you'll be aware that they are actually doing okay at the moment. Uh, and, you know, it's the right thing to do, given the sort of current greenhouse impacts, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Nielsen is the second. Counselor Hay?
Um, I raise to speak against this motion, um, ul- ultimately, if what's happening is that the s-. The independent super fund has decided that investing in a company is the right decision. Because it will, it is the most benefit to their shareholders, then that's what they've done. And they've done that for the explicit purpose of giving money to our staff to improve their own superannuation funds. I, I cannot support a motion that is explicitly trying to take money away from staff and our super funds. So I urge everyone to vote against.
Are there any further speakers? Counselor Veach would like to close the debate, as there are no further speakers, Counselor Veach.
Councillors, you only have to sit, turn on the television or sort of look at your lo- local media outlet. To see the unbelievably horrendous, uh, impact of climate change that are being experienced around the world at the moment. Um, there's now at the moment over seventy bushfires happening in New South Wales, uh, and it's still winter. You've seen what's happened in Hawaii, in Greece, in Italy, uh, at the moment in California. I mean, across Europe, it just goes on and on and on. We know that many, uh, properties are going to be uninsurable. So whatever small, uh, benefits, uh, that, uh, super fund members might be getting nailed. Will be completely and utterly wiped out in the very short-term future. It is going to be meaningless, we are enabling these companies to completely destroy the planet. Um, all savings will be a chimera, they will be wiped out, because people won't be able to insure their homes. Um, or they will just be cat, playing catch-up. Um, this has just been emphasized time and time again. So I really would urge you to support this motion, it's not committing anyone to doing anything other than writing a letter, thank you.
There being no further speakers, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against? Okay, this, thank you, there's been a request for a division, um, Mr. Kelly, could you please pull up, um, the tracker? All those in favour of the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, we have Counselor Pandelfini, Counselor Nielsen, Counselor Veach, Counselor Chapel, Counselor Olive, Counselor Wilson, all those against. We have Counselor Hamilton, Hay, Rosenfeld, McCafferty, Sid, Burst, D'Souza and myself. Um, I declare the motion lost, thank you. We now move to, uh, NM fifty-five slash twenty-three. Uh, moved Counselor Chapel, Local Government, New South Wales, twenty-twenty-three annual government conference motion. Uh, support for the early childhood education in the local government sector. Counselor Chap- uh, moved Counselor Chapel, seconded, sorry, my apologies, seconded Counselor Sid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Sid. Um, I just wanna start this by briefly saying, my children did go to the Ramic Council, um, childcare centre and had a wonderful time. And the educators there are truly top-notch. Um, I got some stats from council last meeting about, um, the ratios there and the skills of the staff that we employ. And I think what I've seen, I mean, kids have been across a bunch of centres over their childhoods, um, is we really are best in class. Like, we really, we look after our educators, we look after the children, the ratios are great, there's lots of skills in there. Um, and then council also has a really hard job to do, because council picks up the kids that are not as lucrative for the commercial centres. Which is often the, the little babies and stuff who require much higher care ratios. Um, so this is basically just saying that councils do need some more support in providing that essential service. Um, I hope you can support it.
Thank you, Counselor Sid is the second. Thank you, uh, are there any further speakers, Counselor Hay?
Um, broadly speaking, uh, uh, I'll speak against the motion, um, we've got. No, no, seriously, um, what we, what this motion is doing is it will do two things. One is it will make childcare, uh, more expensive. Yes.
I, I, I take it there's been a point of order, um, I have been consistent, all speakers shall be heard in silence, Counselor Hay, please continue.
Uh, it's looking at making childcare more expensive. When residents, uh, speak to me about, uh, childcare, they have a, there, there's a lot of concern about the number of places. And also that it's too expensive, this does nothing to increase the number of places and it only serves to in- inflate the price. Uh, the state government, um, may or may not choose to go ahead with this. There was also the, uh, federal government bill shortened, uh, ran a campaign on this at twenty nineteen election. Um, perhaps we, uh, anyway, I, I'm not sure we're even, uh, pushing the right level of government. Anyway, I'm, I'm speaking against the motion.
Okay, I saw Counselor Veach, then I'll go to Counselor Rosenfeld. Actually, no, sorry, Counselor Sid is the second, did you, you didn't wish to speak to it, did you? Uh, uh, okay, I'm, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Counselor Veach, then Counselor Rosenfeld, thank you.
Uh, thank you, um, look, I'd like to sort of refute the comments made by, uh, respectfully refute the coun- comments made by Counselor, um, Hay. The issue is, is that, um, childcare workers employed under, I don't, I don't know the name of the award. But it's the one that covers, uh, private and independent, um, childcare centres. Are currently in negotiations for a twenty-five percent pay increase. Now, whether or not they will get that, it's unclear, but they are likely, the way I understand the negotiations to be going. To get a significant pay increase. There is currently a exodus of childcare workers from across the sector. Because of the very, very low, uh, pay, it's the same as in teaching. Um, so what we will see, if this, uh, the award, uh, under, you know, under the other award that covers independent childcare workers. Does deliver for those childcare workers a higher pay increase. You will see, uh, staff, uh, you know, highly likely to, to be seeking work in these other non-council centres. Simply because the pay under the awards are currently already so low. Uh, it's no criticism at all of, of, of council or our staff or our centres, it's just a fact that they are paid under the award. Um, so this is the likely scenario and this is what, uh, members are saying to us. And that is why they are raising it, because they like working in council, they want to continue working in council-operated childcare centres. But the reality is, it may very well not be viable and we're gonna struggle to attract and retain workers. So that's the reason this motion is up, why it's actually going to be a really, really big issue for our sector. Um, and this motion is addressing this, I commend Counselor Chapel, uh, for putting this up. It's flagging an issue that needs to be at the top of our mind, so I hope you will, uh, support it, thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna basically, um, address, um, point two, um, uh, increasing wages above inflation when inflation's over six percent. In the private sector, I'm, oh, I'd like to get up to, uh, increase up to inflation, but it very, very rarely happens. Um, and, um, it's unrealistic to think that, um, wages can increase, uh, by the rate of inflation as it is currently. Perhaps if it goes down eventually, but as it is currently, uh, because I've, I've seen the private sector time and time again. People are, are basically getting increases well below the current rate of inflation.
Okay, thank you, uh, are there any further speakers on the motion? Uh, Counselor Chapel, do you wish to close the debate, Counselor Chapel, close the debate?
Oh, just very briefly in reply, um, having again been to a large number of, uh, early childhood education centres. Um, the council one is still the cheapest, um, and it gets the full government subsidy. So, uh, the idea that this is somehow gonna price people out of our already extremely affordable centre. I mean, our, our one is, I think, a hundred and thirty-five at its top end. The centre we were at in the city, which was a non-profit centre, was literally a hundred and ninety-four dollars a day. Um, w- w- we're actually doing a really good thing for our residents. And to be honest, if we were in a position to open more early childhood education centres, it's probably the best thing we could do for reducing living costs for our local residents. But I know, I haven't proposed that, I've just proposed this very modest request to the state government, that they give us a bit more support in the critically important work we do.
Uh, thank, thank you, uh, just before I go to call, um, for a vote on this, just for the full disclosure. Um, of the meeting, uh, the United Services Union have actually written to me as mayor, uh, and the general manager to, um, discuss point two. Um, which we have accepted, um, but that has yet to occur. Um, okay, are there, there being no further speakers, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against? I declare the motion carried, thank you. Uh, okay, hold on, sorry, okay, we now move to NM fifty-six slash twenty-three. Notice of motion from Counselor Pandelfini, uh, Local Government, New South Wales, twenty-twenty-three annual conference motion, making use of existing underutilisers. Underutilized spaces for creatives, Counselor Pandelfini?
Um, thank you, I'll just ta- I'll take the motion as read, um, the reason I brought this up was that. Um, there's been extensive research that has gone into, um, you know, for decades actually, funded by the, you know, various federal governments. On the issues that have prevented creatives thriving, um, and which, and kind of, yeah, definitely not thriving over the last few decades. And the three items that consistently come up are access to space, um, financial support and opportunities. Now, our council has made, um, an incredible programme, um, in the last year, uh, making use of underutilized spaces. Um, I'll also note that, um, the Inner West Council, um, is also incredibly active, I'm part of a programme there at the moment. Um, and, uh, uh, kind of inspired by these programmes, the advocacy body NAVA wrote, uh, um. Love your local document, which was all about creatives getting in touch with their local governments. Um, and, you know, collaborating with them and, you know, making sure that they can work together. So, um, I think that this idea of using underutilized spaces is really inspiring one. Because, you know, I'm not saying, you know, take over halls and take over giant spaces everywhere, they could be really tiny ones, like the library. Um, what we've done at the library, um, and also for a lot of councils that don't have a lot of money, um, you know. Um, and also for a lot of councils that don't have a lot of money, um, you know, they don't have the opportunity to build. You know, galleries or museums and things like that. So in the meantime, um, it would be great to promote this, um, idea and there's. You know, templates available now with, now with Randwick and the inner west, um, that other councils can look at around New South Wales. So I urge you to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Seconded by councillor Veitch. Are there any further speakers? Oh, councillor Veitch, do you wish to speak to it? Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put the motion. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay, there has been a request for a division. Okay, thank you. Um, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Pendlefini, councillor Veitch, councillor Chapel, councillor Olive, councillor D'Souza and the mayor, all those against? Councillor Hamilton, Nielsen, Rosenfeld, McCafferty, uh, Wilson, Sid, Burst. Oh, it's. Councillor Hay, can I confirm that you're voting against? Okay, thank you. Um, I declare the motion lost. Okay. Um, we now move to N M fifty seven slash twenty three notice of motion with councillor Chapel, delivery of the Maruba Beach Playground Upgrade. Councillor Chapel, could you please outline what is your mo- mo- okay, thank you councillor Chapel.
I'm moving as per the business paper.
Thank you. Um, councillor Rosenfeld?
Yeah, fully agree with my fellow central ward councillor here, the, uh, playground for once to record the time. Um, and, um, and al- also, uh, she notes that the draft Maru, um, beach plan, uh, is coming soon. Uh, please, uh, can I have it, uh, tied in, in September, cause we're waiting a long time for it, so. Um, as, as I know I've spoken to on, uh, about on the phone. So, uh, but yeah, fully support, uh, this, um, the playground does need. Uh, sorry, some upgrades, so.
Thank you. Uh, there being, almost got there. Uh, councillor Sid?
Of course it's not gonna be in the south.
Okay, shall I preemptively move a thirty minute extension?
Um, I do have a question because we, we did delay a lot of stuff because we were waiting for the master plan. So far, I think, and my biggest bugbear was the toilet at the pavilion should have been the first priority of everything, but apparently they're in there for next year. Which is a good thing. But it seems like just about everything that was apparently we've been waiting for in the master plan has actually already come out without the master plan. Um, because wasn't the master plan, exa- the example was that the master plan originally was. Pavilion might join onto the, uh, surf club, that the playground might be moved and there might be this extravaganza, there might be a splash park at the beach, there might be this. There was all gonna be in the master plan. If we start picking and choosing what we want separate to the master plan. That means we could be going against the master plan. I have no objection to getting it built, but. Is the master plan definitely coming in September? In other words, that's my point. So that we don't have to keep bringing things forward and then. It might not be what's actually meant to be there.
Uh, through, 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 through to the relevant officer, and I actually have a supplementary, um, question to that, um. I- i- is the proposed motion consistent with the draft document that you're aware of, couns- uh, Mister Clark?
Thank you through Mister Mayor. Yes, that's correct. Through Mister Mayor, yes.
Uh, there being no further speakers, uh, councillor Chapel wishes to close the debate.
Uh, just cause I didn't really open it. Um, I just wanna note that my children have grown out of playgrounds in the time we've lived in Maruba and the playground's still the same. Um, and just the on, well, not tonight, um, just the ongoing request for swings down there from literally every parent at the school.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Um, we now move to N M fifty eight slash twenty three notice of motion from councillor Pendlefini. Local government, New South Wales, twenty twenty three annual contra- conference motion discouraging gas and solid fuel heating in new developments to mitigate global warming. Uh, moved councillor Pendlefini, seconded councillor Nielsen. Okay.
Um, yeah, again, I'll take the notice of motion as read. Um, I guess I just wanted to make a note, um, if, if it hadn't been read. That, um, this is for future developments. This is not, um, for developments. Like that, this is not to make everyone retrofit their homes. So this is not a financial effect. On the entire population. This is looking into the future. Um, we were spoken to tonight by, uh. An esteemed anethetist who I had, did not know it was even coming, um, but who spoke incredibly eloquently. On all of the research that is out there. Um, who do we have to look towards? We have the council of Parramatta, we have Waverley, City of Sydney, Victoria, South Australia, we have forty two California cities. Got Ireland, Denmark, Greenland, France. We have Neil Perry, who has been cooking on induction for the last twenty years. So we have many, many examples and reasons, um, including, um. Health, the environment and financial, uh, uh, benefit. Uh, to not continue to build, um, new developments and homes with gas. So I hope you will support my motion and send this to the local government, New South Wales Conference.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Nielsen, are there any further speakers? I, I actually saw a hand up from councillor Hamilton, then councillor Veitch.
Just to correct, uh, comment from the mover of this motion. It states in the text that the mover would like to send to local government, New South Wales. Number two, provide subsidies to assist current users of gas and wood heating to convert to clean renewable energy. And remove all unflected gas heaters from New South Wales Government Schools as soon as practicable. Two thousand, it's over two thousand New South Wales Government Schools, so that's gonna be very, um, costly. Yes, I did understand that this would be a little bit of a. Uh, you know, a, a little bit of what's happening now, a little bit of what's gonna happen in the future, a little bit of what's gonna happen in the past. Um, it's always these inconsistencies that really do blur the lines for residents who try to understand, um, the implications of, of things. Such as these. There's also solid fuel heating and cooking systems are not permitted in.
Councillors will be heard in silence. Thank you.
So point C says, states, solid fuel heating and cooking systems are not permitted in any development. So that doesn't actually say future development, that says any development. This whole idea is completely flawed. It hasn't been thought out. Uh, it's shocking timing when you consider inflation and how costly it is to live right now. It's, um, it is actually, it's double the cost to produce electricity over gas. I don't care what anyone says, this is facts. Straight from, um, straight from, you know, uh, energy provider sites and, um. What an actual person here. Um, and so anyway, I think I've said, uh, plenty about it and what I would say is. That it's something that we shouldn't as Ramick res- as Ramick councillors be pushing this through to local government, New South Wales annual conference. Considering the fact that we haven't even implemented these changes ourselves. So we haven't even debated. And implemented the development control plans, um, for Ramick. So why are we not considering it for ourselves? So we're saying it's not for us. But it's gonna be for every single, um, local council. I think this is really inappropriate and, um. I would consider this something that we would definitely vote down.
Thank you councillor Veitch. Uh, all councillors, councillor Veitch, thank you. Please continue.
Um, I'd like to speak to the, I'd like to speak in support of the motion, but I also have a question to the re- through to the relevant officer. Um, do any of the officers, uh, uh, able to say how much council has saved by moving to our hundred percent renewable, uh, P P A? With Zen Energy through S S Rock, uh, and also through our savings, uh, to converting to a hundred percent L E D lights. Because my understanding, it's literally hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Um, through to the general manager.
Uh, thanks, I don't have any information on here, but I certainly can get it for the councillor.
Uh, thank you. Uh, councillor Veitch, please continue.
We, we have had reports before and, and I understand you can't provide it off the, off the top of your hat, but when we get those reports back. We'll just email the general manager, you will see that council itself, through its own operational plan, has saved, like. By going on that power purchase agreement with S S Rock, with Zen Energy. We locked ourselves in to lower energy rates before they skyrocketed. We are saving ourselves. And our rate payers hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we are, it's all in a push to meet our renewable energy targets with, which this council has resolved to do. Um, the evidence, uh, from, uh, the doctor. Doctor Hull, who came and spoke, was indisputable. I mean, the, the health effects of gas, uh, in homes. Uh, is, is really detrimental and, and we know these issues have been raised about gas heaters, um, in schools. For probably at least a decade. Uh, so if we can actually save. Money before thinking and not install this stuff in the first place, we are doing, you know, future generations a big favour. The future is in renewable energy, we know that. We also know that the federal government is providing billions of dollars. Uh, in subsidies and, and rebates and programs to actually enable these types of things. And that's what we should be, uh, trying to do. Um, this is the right thing to do. Uh, many other councillors are already taking those, those steps. Um. So I'd urge councillors to support this motion because, um, it is just redundant to be installing. This redundant, you know, over, you know, one hundred or plus years technology in new homes. When cheaper, uh, alternatives, uh, are there for the taking. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Olive. And are there any further speakers? Okay, councillor Olive?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to, uh, clarify something. There was mentioned that, you know, so we hadn't discussed this in relation to the SEP. But we did actually, and sort of we, we did discuss it in relation to the SEP, where we came to a conclusion, uh, that we should. Encourage electrification of new developments, you know, sort of, and, uh, we would have actually said that. Um, we would stipulate that they be, uh, they have electrification of new developments. Except that we didn't have the power over the, um, basic SEP and the basic controls and, uh, that, you know, sort of is something which. Determines, you know, sort of how far we can go. But this, um, particular, um, uh, motion. Is asking the state government that does have that kind of control over, um, uh, over the, um. Standards for, um, the, uh, the environmental standards and what we can do as far as electrification and gas. And so this is just, um, instead of, uh, you know, sort of, this is just, uh, using, you know, sort of a, a, a double pronged attack. We're encouraging residents here to, um, electrify their homes through in, in new developments. And that we're also, uh, encouraging and pushing the state government to change their regulations and the basics, except to allow this to go a bit further forward. To do what we would have liked to have done in the first place, which is, um, have a stipulation that homes be electrified, new developments be electrified. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, councillor Hay.
People are throwing the word around encourage a lot and of course it says. Solid fuel heating and cooking systems are not permitted in any development. We are not encouraging. This motion is saying quite blatantly, we want, that they want to ban. Solid fuel heating and cooking systems. Now, if I can, uh, this will have a negative impact on a lot of things, specifically. If you go down the Antak Parade Kings, but there are plenty of Chinese restaurants that cook using a wok where you need gas heating. To get a very high temperature. It's great that, uh, Neil Perry can cook on induction, but that doesn't mean that your average. Well, that doesn't mean that ev- that every restaurant.
Councillors will be heard in silence.
It doesn't say future, it says not permitted in any development.
Ca- ca- councillors will be heard in silence. Thank you. Please continue, including councillor Hamilton.
I think the point is made, it's, uh, the Chi- Chinese restaurants using wok heating is one very obvious example. There's plenty of other cuisines that. Use either gas so alone, or they'll use charcoal system which is part powered by gas. Uh, this is going to have a very detrimental effect on the ability of restaurants to serve food to residents and, uh, urge everyone to vote against.
Okay, thank you. Um, councillor Nielsen?
I'll just make that one quick point, just to, um, show councillor Hay, if you look here at the end of, um, point one, the last, uh, line there, it says. In future development control plan. So it's all about in the future and it's us trying to look after future developments. And so it makes a huge amount of sense.
Thank you councillor McCafferty.
Uh, I'm, uh, wanting to speak against this motion. Um, I think the effect that it has on ethnic communities and their culture in particular. It's basically an attack on people's way, way of life.
Um, sorry, sorry, I, I will hear the point of order. Um, all points of order, sorry, sorry, ho- hold on, councillor Nielsen? Thank you. Councillor Veitch has stood on a point of order. I've yet to hear what the point of order is. Could you please outline it and then I'll rule on it?
Thank you. This motion, there is nothing in this motion that could be even slightly construed to be an attack on ethnic communities or people's way of life. That.
Just, uh, hold on, I'm just gonna hear it. I'm gonna hear it.
Puning the councillor and this council. The councillor should apologize and withdraw the statement. That cannot stand. There is nothing in there that could in. Even the slightest way. Be said to be doing that. It should be withdrawn. It's completely inappropriate.
Okay, what I will do is I will ask councillor McCafferty what she will like to do before I rule on that point of order. Councillor McCafferty, do you maintain them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, look. On the comments, I, I, I think that. Councillor McCafferty in making those comments was not intending to impugn the reputation of councillor Pendlefini in moving. Uh, this particular motion, because I think it is a genuinely held belief as it relates to, um. The intentions behind, um, this particular, um, motion, um, which is held by in- individuals. Whether or not we, uh, can come to an agreement on that, um, is, is another matter, but I, I, I don't think that it is a, a deliberate intent. Uh, to impugn the reputations of a fellow councillor. Um, however, what I will do is give everyone a general reminder to. Please keep their remarks to the substantive motion as much as they can, uh, and to recognize that there are diversity of views around the chamber. Uh, and, and that we're not gonna agree on a large amount of things and therefore it is best to debate the issues rather than the, um, potential motives or not. Um, of your fellow councillors. Uh, please continue.
So I was not talking about the, um, I was talking about the end effect that this has in that it affects. C- certain ethnic communities far, far more than others. Um, that is all. And I think in that regard, we have got to be very careful always of the end result. Of some of these motions and how they will be perceived. Perception is everything.
Thank you very much councillor McCafferty for your clarification. Are there any further speakers? Uh, councillor Burst?
It was only in the last twelve months that the E U ratified gas and nuclear energy as clean fuels, as green fuels. I'll just leave it.
Okay, councillor Pendlefini, would you like to close the debate? No.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Um, there being no further speakers, I will now put the motion, uh, all those in favour? All those against? I think the noes have it. Okay, thank you. It has been lost. Okay, thank you. We have N M fifty nine slash twenty three, uh, from councillor Pendlefini, report into options for council collaborating with UNSW design students. Councillor Pendlefini?
Um, thank you. Uh, I will take the motion as read. I had the hon- honour and privilege of attending the, um. Randwick Design Awards last year? Is that last year? Was that last year or this year? I can't remember when. That was this year. You're right. It was this year. Yes, and, um, council had worked towards a new award. Which was for the UNSW, was it for, yeah, UNSW Student Design Award. And what took that out was, um, a wonderful, it's very hard to see here, but a wonderful design, um, for a bike rack. There were many amazing industrial design students and designs that were presented at the awards and as we have had tonight. Um, many town centre rejuvenation plans, many, um. Uh, the place based strategy, we are gonna be looking, you know, the Meek Street Plaza discussion that we had tonight. Um, so many spaces that we could actually see students from our very L G A designs, um. Put into the community, which is a common collabora- Um, put into the community, which is a common collaboration that happens between councils, um governments and universities. So it would be great to just look into the options of what that might look like. Um, and I know that the Randwick Innovation uh hub are already doing that kind of thing as well. So perhaps we could be collaborating with them. So it'd just be great to see what possibilities there are. Um, and so that we could celebrate our uh local, you know, having the UNSW uh in our LGA. Um, and seeing some of these designs, you know, I'd love to see them at the um. Clavelli uh pop-up park that we've got coming out, we're at the Meek Street Plaza, you know, it'd be amazing to be able to reference back. One of the biggest and most successful universities in Australia.
Thank you, councillor Nielsen as the secondaire.
Um, yeah, no, I'm happy to support this and I guess I'm only a little bit concerned. Whether in fact we might ever be in a situation of having a conflict of interest between, you know, sometimes we're approving things. In con- uh concerning the university, but we do have so many times that we work in collaboration and so on, so. The report will give us all those sorts of um concerns and hopefully ways through it and so on, but I think it's a great idea, so. Hopefully others will think so too and support it.
Okay, thank you. I have a hand up from councillor Hamilton.
I think this is a a great idea. As a um alumni of UNSW, I each time I see students achieve. And come out of that university, of course, I feel an equal sense of achievement. I think it's fantastic that councillor councillor Pendlefini being an academic at UNSW and has worked there and. Has a long affiliation and association with UNSW. I think that um it's great that. She's also promoting this her fellow students in their endeavours to see their their work. Um, be realised and be placed. And as an event manager as well, I'm sure that. Um, you know, councillor Pendlefini would be able to provide some assistance to the events team potentially. Uh, and so, yeah, I think this is a a great idea. Um, fantastic to see fellow alumnis coming out of UNSW and supporting um students as they progress through the university. And um on to greater and things, a bigger and brighter future.
Councillor Sid.
And I also think this is a great idea, but have we sort of fallen behind? We used to do a lot more with the University of New South Wales and I feel like this is bringing it all back again. Because we used to have engineering students, do we still do that as interns? We used to have planning students as interns.
Through you, Mister Mayor, uh councils um for a long time had internships with with engineering, um primarily from from UTS. But all unis too.
My last one is to the general manager. Remember, we we, there was a collaboration between um. Ourselves, the university and the racecourse because it was the three biggest industries in Randwick. Is that collaborations? I I know Covid sort of slowed it down a lot. Just wondering if that's all starting to ramp up again or will ramp up soon.
Thank you. To the general manager.
Certainly with the university and the hospital pressing, yes. The, yeah, the um collaboration, the ATC was around the light rail.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Pendlefini, would you like to close the debate? Thank you. Uh, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to N M sixty slash twenty-three. Notice a motion from councillor Olive, while walking trail in the Randwick LGA.
Uh, I'll take it that the motion is read. Um, the whaling industry is sort of almost.
Um, through to, um, moved councillor Olive, seconded councillor Nielsen.
Um, the whaling industry almost uh decimated all all of the whales that we have. Uh, or that we had, you know, so and so there were very few. When I was growing up, it was a um. A rarity for a whale to come up the coast. Now, um, uh, they migrate in. Around August, a little bit before August up the coast. Um, it is one of the great natural uh wonders and it's something. Um, that we have here that I I don't think that we celebrate at all. Um, they go up the coast, they come back later on in the year. And there's nothing that I know of that council does to celebrate this natural wonder, a naturally occurring wonder. Of these, you know, sort of, uh, the these denizens, what, denizens of the deep, the huge. Um, the the largest animals, you know, uh, literally flourish, um. Yeah, but you know, sort of they they are ginormous, you know, sort of creatures moving up and down the coast and it is. Just a um something which is a wonderful sight to to see. Um, uh, I, the most of the ones that we do see are humpback whales. But uh we did know, uh, I did note that, you know, sort of a um a southern right. Mother and calf came into Sydney. And there was a fuss made on the media, you know, sort of uh about this because. They are particularly endangered. Um, the uh Eastern Suburbs Australian Conservation Foundation are particularly concerned about, you know, sort of. The need to um to um try and improve the uh the numbers of the southern right whale. And want to do everything in their power to um highlight their plight. So they suggested that um. Uh, we have a a walking trail, a whale walking trail somewhere. Where, you know, sort of it would be a a a global, um, a a globally known. Um, uh, uh. Activity in the local area, which will bring people from, you know, sort of many parts uh of the the world and and the country. To actually stand and watch and walk with whales as they move up the coast. To see them and try and follow follow their um uh their way as they they. Um, as they move um further north or go further south. Now, this I think is a great idea because it has so many tie-ins with things that were being suggested, you know, sort of. Uh, Ted Singh um suggested in two thousand and fourteen, it's still on the books. Of having a whale-watching platform which was accessible for, yeah. Was it Brendan, well, Ted Singer's got his name on there as well. Um, anyway, you know, sort of, so, you know, sort of that. That's on the books at the moment, that um that there are the binoculars which were passed. Uh, whale-watching binoculars which were passed, you know, sort of by this council. Uh, um, that uh council are in discussion with, you know, sort of the uh. Uh, Labarus Aboriginal Land Council about, you know, sort of a uh. I'm not sure how it's gone, but a a sculpture, you know, sort of we're talking about the sculpture. Because for local Aboriginal people, it's an important um, an important totem. So, you know, sort of, uh, this is, that that's another um aspect to this whale-walking trail. The um. Uh, council staff think that this is um a a good idea to have, you know, sort of, uh, to. Uh, something to be looked in. The um, uh, the uh Eastern Suburbs um, uh. Um, conservation, uh, uh, Australian Conservation Foundation suggested having plaques, you know, sort of to um. To outline, you know, sort of, uh, um, um, the, um, the, uh. Natural aspects of the whale and maybe, you know, sort of have have, you know, sort of, um, uh, high quality. Uh, things for people to read along the along the way. So, um. That it would be something which, you know, sort of we could actually, you know, sort of have to um enhance. Our um, a a whale-walking trail. The tourism and business um benefits of this. Um, don't need to be, you know, sort of, um articulated, they're they're quite ob- obvious. I was told by, you know, sort of, um, uh, the director of, um, city services that, um, this. The director of city services that, um, uh, that the, to undertake a study which is being, uh, um, uh, done here. Would is more than your normal uh study. It would take, you know, sort of engineering analysis because to do things close to the coast. Um, i- is not that straightforward. So there would be cost involved. So it's been put off to the twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, uh, budget to have have um the funding for this done. And um and also it allows, you know, sort of the discussion with the Labarus Aboriginal Land Council and possible. You know, it's arts funding to um, uh, take, you know, sort of, uh, to be, you know, sort of, um. In, uh, formulated and maybe progressed. Uh, in a first instance before the um other other stage. So, you know, sort of with all these tie-ins, with, you know, sort of, uh, the message we send in terms of conservation. Uh, the, um, I I commend this to councillor.
Thank you. Uh, is there a secondaire councillor councillor Nielsen reserves her right? I have a quick question through to uh the relevant officer. Um, what would be the implications of this particular motion in relation to the public arts strategy which is currently being undertaken?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. The public art strategy is currently being updated and will come to council by early next year.
Okay, thank you. Does it consider matters such as this?
It will, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Sid.
Actually, Mister Mayor, I think this is a good idea, so good that I think it's been brought up at multiple council meetings. The actual totem at uh Labarus is my idea and that's been, that was four years ago. Um, councillor, uh, Brendan Roberts, I think, brought up the binoculars, uh, people have brought up the stands. Um, but it is all being tied into the, so we are waiting till it all just happens. Will it just just become part of that strategy, I suppose? Orders that encompass all the others or does something go first before?
Through to the director of community and culture.
Yes, they'll all be included.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. N M sixty-one slash twenty-three, notice a motion, councillor Sid, preparing for the growth. In football for the twenty twenty-four season, moved councillor Sid, seconded councillor Burst. Councillor Sid, could you please outline what it is you are moving?
I just move it as per my, uh, not, uh, motion. Um, that we improve the fields and also the security and the lighting and everything else that goes with. Safety, particularly for female athletes, particularly in in uh football, but also in other sports. Um, this has been one of my um sort of motions that again, for the last. Six years, one of my first motions ever was when I saw people playing, uh, females playing Aussie rules across the road. And they had no change rooms and they had very bad facilities. It's very much improved since then. Um, I've always wanted to improve the toilets in the middle of Heffron Park, especially for the netball players. We've got the uh shade cloth which I've put through, so I've always tried to improve the facilities for female players. The Matildas has obviously brought it to the fore. There's going to be a a massive uh growth in female participation. Um, and as we heard from Mister Singh, that uh females play better on uh grass fields. But in the meantime, to have that, because at the moment, we have sports that are playing summer and winter. And the only days off they get is probably Christmas Day and for our outdoor staff. Fields like at Heffron Park where they play Aussie rules, um, on the Saturday, Sunday and train. Then on the Monday, Wednesday, they play OzTag and there's hundreds of people playing it. And that goes through winter and summer. So our fields just can't cope with the the stress. And that's why, as we were saying about the, um. I know they're not the ants pants, but synthetic fields at least can take the to the, uh. The one at Heffron, I think, is for the last five years, if it could be used twenty-four seven, it would be. Um. But I do would like to propose uh two very good fields. Uh, beet turf, beet hybrid, beet synthetic, that people don't use as much and it's used for particular games. The lighting is fantastic. Male and female. And also, as it's been brought to my attention, that it'd be fantastic to have one very good field. Set up with the with the li- uh, uh, lights and all that, where kids can just have a kick around and enjoy having a shot of goals. Uh, so I commend this motion. I think that we really do need to be proactive rather than reactive. We really do need to make sure that the fields are ready for next year because there will be an explosion of uh extra participants.
Councillor Burst is the secondaire.
I'd just like to commend councillor Sid on this uh motion. Um, I just think back to two thousand and six. Uh, when the the men's team uh went well in Germany, um, and the explosion in the next ten years. In junior soccer in Australia. And I'm, this is the, this is a catalyst for. A big boom in the next ten years for women's soccer. I I remember the early days of coaching where. I had several girls playing in my team, but then under thirteens, they had to go and move into the a girls' only, so they couldn't play with the boys. Um, and they were just as good as the boys in my team. So, um. It was, um, it's good to see that they can now start that path from under sixes, under sevens onwards. And um and move up through the ranks. So it's going to be an exciting time for the next, especially the next ten years as we see growth. And we need to have more capacity, um, and more fields available to um, to to handle that growth and capacity.
Uh, thank you. I had a hand up from councillor Rosenfeld, then I go to councillor D'Souza.
I fully commend the motion and it's and it's brought about because of, uh, it's it's so good to see the the country fall in love with the the round ball game. The game of football as well as women's football. Um, as Johnny Warren said, I told you so. Um, he he always professed that the game of football, um, obviously I come from a like a. An ethnic background where football was my my first sport. So, uh, great to see, great to see the live site getting, um. Uh, su- such good uh numbers and uh and and fully commend the idea of that of having that in our our LGA and well promoted. Uh, yeah, fully support the motion.
Thank you, um councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Mister Mayor, the Matildas took Australia by storm during the FIFA Women's World Cup, generating levels of passion and enchantment. No one could ever have predicted when the tournament began. I would like to compliment councillor Said for bringing this important motion to council. Future funding and providing facilities for women's sport is paramount. If we're going to continue to be successful in sport as a nation. I would also like to thank Roxanne Fay, or as she's affectionately affectionately known as Roxy. And her team for organising the big screen and food trucks at Heffron Park. Her hard work certainly brought the community together and made me proud. Made me, sorry, I lost my place, made me proud as to be a councillor of this great council. The Women's World Cup, Mister Mayor, was thrilling, enthralling, instructive and unifying. The Matildas took Australia by storm, as I said during the World Cup, generating levels of passion. But it also unified us. Besides the sensational performances of the Matildas. The great outcome for Australia in the World Cup was the unifying effect. Despite our political and social differences. Australia truly came together to support our national women's football team. This, Mister Mayor, provides hope that our differences perhaps aren't that deep-seated after all. If we can bond as a nation over football, maybe we can also bond as a nation over other subjects and issues. But let's not get too far away from the real heroes of the World Cup twenty twenty-three, our Matildas. And their fearless bid for glory. May we speak forever of them with pride, Mister Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I call on the the mover to close the debate, can I please have a pres- okay, can I, can I please, hold on? Yes, can I please have a procedural motion to extend the meeting until uh midnight? Moved councillor Burst, seconded by. Councillor Chapel, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Uh, councillor Chapel.
Um, I just have a very brief amendment that I have um sent through to Mister Kelly and I've also spoken. Um, to councillor Sid about, um, it's basically just to specify premium fields rather than. Uh, referring to, I think, divisive, um, synthetic and hybrid fields, which both involve plastics and as we heard. Um, are less suitable for women because, uh, let's be clear, this is about women's participation in sport. We've talked big game on women's participation in sport. We should build premium fields that are for women first and foremost. And that means building premium turf fields. You know, when the, when we built the Heffron Centre, we didn't give the Rabidows a synthetic field. Um, we know that the top quality game, which is what we're talking about, attracting, you know, regional quality fields in our area, it needs to be on grass. Because that's what people want to play on. The the reason I first heard about synthetic turf was in twenty fifteen, the Matildas at a World Cup were playing on synthetic turf. And made their deep displeasure known about the injury risk and about the scalding that they were getting, playing on this surface. Um, I'm not opposed to it in general. I I have been to s- synthetic fields. I recognise they have their place. It was a great location for the live site. Um, but I think if we're talking about fields for women, let's talk about fields for women. Um, and I would also just note, just to the mover of the motion. Um, the preferred language would be women rather than females, so women's facilities rather than female facilities. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. The secondaire of the amendment, sorry, sorry, the secondaire of the amendment, thank, sorry, thank you councillor. Thank, thank you. The seconder of the amendment, so, so the seconder of the amendment, tha- so, thank you councillors. Seconded, seconded by councillor Olive. Okay, thank you councillor Olive. Do you wish to speak to the amendment? Okay, are there any f- Okay, councillor, sorry councillor Sid, do you accept the amendment? Yeah, you can. Uh, wha- what I will do is I'll go to councillor Olive, who's second, you don't wish to speak to it? Uh, councillor Sid, you can speak to the amendment. Thank you.
Uh, Mr Mayor, exactly what councillor Chapel said, as it, uh, Mr Singh said last year, or I think might have been early this year, I did bring a proposal, a motion, sorry, that we do make a premium, uh, grass field and I think a couple of councils voted against it, specifically for women on field forty-six, which has been done, we've nearly finished it, it'll be ready for, can I just ask the, um, that be ready by next season, I suppose, yeah? We have the one that flooded next to Souths, whatever. That's been done.
Through to the Director of City Services.
Yeah, through, Mr Membly, that was completed some months ago.
So, and part of that motion was to, at the same time, that, uh-
Councillor Sid, could you just turn it on?
Uh, there was a, there was a premium field for women in that, and it had to be turf, and it, I mentioned it had to be turf. And also at the same time, there was going to be amenities next to it, and that's also in the motion, but we did do the turf. So, knowing that, I specifically, if, I think our council officers can understand that we can have either a premium turf field, which is fantastic, at the same time, we may need probably one more synthetic, somewhere within the, I don't even know where you could put it, but maybe one more. Because they are used virtually, they are the lifeblood. You ask any sporting team, they are the lifeblood of sports that they can get through their season.
Thank you. Are there any further speak- uh, well, hold on, I will. Are there any further speakers on the amendment?
I just wanted to ask councillor Sid whether he was happy to, um, change female sports to women's sports.
Thank-
It's, it might be a small bit-
Okay, okay. I, a- all right, okay. Councillor Sid accepts it. Thank you. We're now back on the, uh, hold on, we're now back on the amendment. Thank you. Chapel, just councillors, we're going to keep all comments relevant to the amendment which is in front of us. There is a question from councillor Veitch? No? Okay. Are there any further speakers on the amendment? There being no further speakers on the amendment, I will now put the amendment. All those in favour? All those against? Declare the amendment lost. Okay. Thank you. We now return to the debate on the motion, uh, moved. Are there any further speakers? There being no, councillor Veitch.
Yeah, look, it, it's a great motion, but it's just a little bit disappointing. If you profess that this is all about promoting, uh, more girls and women to play football in our LGA and we've heard from, you know, the president of ESFA that it is better for girls and women to play on us, on a natural turf field and we all know that there's many other reasons that natural turf fields are so much better.
Point of order.
And we were happy to-
S- sorry, sorry, I will hear the point of order. Hold on, councillor Hamilton?
Yes.
Councillor Hamilton?
Oh, I thought that was like a question. Yeah, I am councillor Hamilton. Uh, councillor Veitch is speaking to the lost amendment.
Look, I, I'm really sorry, actually, I, I, I'm unable to, because I actually didn't follow enough of it to be able to make a ruling on it. Councillor Veitch, could you please continue, if that's all right? I'm sorry, I just, I, I only caught the snippets.
I'm referring to the reference to synthetic fields in the motion which we are currently debating. So, we had a speaker from ESFA who made a point of saying that it is highly preferable for girls and women to play on natural turf fields because of, uh, it decreases the risk of injury. If this motion is about supporting women's sport and promoting more access for women to play football, then we should accept the recommendation of the president of ESFA to remove the reference to synthetic and hybrid fields and just say premium. Otherwise, it's just really about promoting the status quo, it's not doing anything else. So, uh, I was quite moved by councillor D'Souza's, uh, speech. Um, we have all come together, um, in support of the Matildas. It was really an amazing experience, I think, for most of us. But we're, women are just not going to get those opportunities unless we actually provide them with the facilities that they need. Otherwise, we're just perpetuating business as usual. So, um, I really would appeal, uh, to councillor Said and the second, I can't recall who it was, to, to, um, to consider, um, councillor Chapel's amendment to stay with premium.
Point of order, see?
So, so there's, so there's a point of order there. Look, look. Uh, uh, look, the beginning of councillor Veitch's comments, I interpreted as speaking against the motion. However, at the conclusion of it, it did appear that we were re-debating a matter that we had just, um, um, dealt with. I will uphold the point of order. I do note that councillor Veitch has concluded her remarks. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers. Uh, councillor Said, do you wish to close the debate?
Just, just very quickly, Mr Mayor, I can understand where people are coming from, but in the actual motion, and as I said, field forty-six has already been made into a premium female sports field. That also, in that, it says bring back a report, so it's really up to the council offices. They might come back and say three premium grass fields, five turf fields, so that's all we, it's up to them to decide what they think is going to be the best way forward. They might go one of each. I don't even know exactly what a hybrid is, but they might even go one of each, so, um, who knows? Well, I'll wait till the report comes back and then we can debate it from there.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare the motion carried. Thank you. Uh, questions on notice? Can I get somebody to move that the questions are read noted? All those in favour? Uh, so Chapel, Olive, all those in favour, all those against? Thank you. We now move to, uh, confidential. Can we please, um, make sure that we turn off the audio recording? Um, for those who are listening at home, we'll move into confidential session for a period of time, at which point the, um, uh, outcomes will be read onto the public record. uh, outcomes will be read onto the public record. Okay, thank you. Um, I am now going to read the outcomes of the confidential session into the record. Uh, CS thirty four slash twenty three. Uh, the admin building refurbishment was carried in an amended fashion, the details of which can be found on the, uh, Randwick Council minutes. CO thirty slash twenty three, tender for the supply of plants, uh, trees and associated services was carried in an amended fashion unanimously, the details of which can be found on the minutes. MM thirty eight slash twenty three, the recommendation on the business paper was carried to appoint MacArthur Talent Architects, uh, carried unanimously. CS thirty five slash twenty three, uh, was carried unanimously, the details of which can be found on the business paper. There being no further business, uh, I declare the, there, there are no petitions. I declare the Randwick Council meeting, August council meeting closed at eleven fifty five P M. Thank you.